Good evening, everyone.
Oh, that's amazing.
Roll call, please, someone?
Trustee Weekly.
President.
Trustee McAvoy.
President.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Vice President Lawson. President Marcus.
Here.
Item 4.2, reported on closed session. In closed session, the board unanimously approved a settlement agreement in the case of Parents versus Redwood City School District. The terms of the agreement include that parents will release all past and future claims against the district in exchange for reimbursement for educational expenses not to exceed $122,000. And, give me just one second. So, welcome everyone to another Redwood City School District Board meeting. Those that need Spanish interpretation, los que necesitan interpretación al español, por favor, llame al 978-990-5137 y presione 8377041 y el símbolo de número para la contraseña. If you are speaking to the board, the public is encouraged to speak to the board on issues of or concerns, whether or not the issues are on the agenda. To address the board, please complete the speaker's card available and give it to Evelyn here to my left. And if you are online, please submit a Google Sheet. If you wish to speak to the board on a subject listed on the agenda, you will be called to the podium at the time that the item is being considered by the board. If the item is not on the agenda, you will be called to the podium during oral communication. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person, per topic, unless otherwise noted. Are there any changes to the agenda? Great, haven't hear none. Can I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there any oral communication?
Yes, we have a speaker card from Chris Robel.
Is he online?
He was online.
Hi. Yes, Chris Robel, thank you. So I wanted to follow up on the February 15th board meeting where, and I'm quite concerned, and I think other residents are as well. So we heard the Taft principal talk about concerns at the school. And if you look at the school accountability report card, which you recently published, 39.6% of the students are demonstrating a chronic absentee rate. The principal talked about trauma, pervasive trauma in the school, and she underscored the need for at least five things: a school psychologist, trauma-based training, behavioral therapist, tutoring, fingerprinting for parents. These are all operating expenses. They have nothing to do with bonds. And by the way, the school accountability report card talked about the fact the facility was good overall. The only things that are needed is, let's see, a soap in the girls restroom and a light out in the library. So those are the two things I saw. So the issue is about what's inside the walls of the building, not adding more walls and more buildings. So I think we can, what was shocking to me, honestly, was that you, the trustees, who are elected representatives to take care of the community and the kids in the community, didn't make any decisions and didn't respond to her needs. So why is there not an immediate shift of a school psychologist from my neighborhood, for example, in one of the the better performing districts? Move that school psychologist into Taft as an urgent need to address the situation, as an example. Right? There was no decisions taken. It was just a bunch of empathy and sympathy, but no changes. And I didn't hear any of her needs addressed. You've got 85% of the students not meeting math and over 75% not meeting English standards, and Garfield is even worse. So I urge you, to me, it's honestly, it's criminal that we've got, you know, if you think of a two-by-two quadrant on education, high quality, low quality, and spending, you know, low, high, we're in the high-spending category and low-quality category. Honestly, it's an abject failure, and I'm just going to be blunt with it. It needs to be fixed. You, the trustees, are responsible for it. You do not report to the superintendent. You represent the community. I've also seen a lot of behavior from trustees, specifically Mike and Janet, where they, and Elisa going to the superintendent for when there's a concern raised. That's not the appropriate protocol. You represent the electors, the people that represented you. So please, this is an urgent thing. Deal with Taft, deal with Garfield. Give everybody equality in terms of education. Not, this is the haves and the have-nots in this district, and the money isn't being spent well. And bond oversight's another big issue, which this meeting was closed, and I urge you to look at California statute 54950. Meetings are supposed to be open and public. The people's business is public business. So those meetings should all be open, and there's no reason, and that'll be dealt with separately. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think.
No more.
Great, thanks. Moving on with bond program consent items. Can I please get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you. So moving on to school and community reports. Presentation on school's plans for student achievement for McKinley Institute of Technology and Kennedy Middle School.
Oh. Well, good evening, Susana. How are you? Yeah. No, no, there's a button there.
Welcome.
Welcome, welcome.
We're happy to have you.
Thank you.
Welcome. And this is Susana's first time doing this ever. So I am very grateful that she's here with us this evening, and she has brought some staff members. And maybe you would like to introduce the staff members that are with you tonight.
Thank you so much, Dr. Baker. Good evening, board trustees. Buenas noches a todos. I have with me Cynthia Cardona. She's the community school coordinator and a lot of teachers that I promised I didn't know they were coming, but I'm so excited that they are here. So it's good to see them all. And I also have my MTSS Tosa sitting over there, Michelle Fan, and Caroline Williams, who is supporting me at school. So thank you so much, all of you, for being here. Like Dr. Baker said, this is my first rodeo, so bear with me if I'm a little bit anxious. I want to, we're going to present our SIPS report to all of you. And I want to just introduce our school a little bit to the community if they don't know who we are. So we are McKinley Institute of Technology, and we are one of the school of choices here in the district. So which means that the parents need to choose our school to come, and they usually do it because of our program, our technology program. So for our overview, we set three, you know, these are the goals for the district. And so we have some targets that we looked at the data from last year, and we set some targets for the next year. And in order to meet those targets, we created activities and things that we needed to in order to meet them, and we put them in tiers. So for the first goal, we are focusing on reducing the amount of suspensions as well as reducing the chronic absenteeism in our school. So in order to do that, we decided that we needed to make sure that our students felt that their school was the place they wanted to go. That is why we focus a lot on creating community, culture, relationships, and awareness. All our tier-one strategies for both suspensions and chronic absenteeism are based on that. We brought a lot of assemblies to, in order to create prevention towards whatever that the kids can do in order to get suspended according to the board policy. So starting from 2P assemblies, those are the ones that talk about drugs and alcohol, re-evolution assemblies, great level when we talk about PBIS, culture. So you have all of them there. One of the ones that stands out for us are Unity Days. We brought them through San Mateo County, and we saw a lot of improvement, as you will see in the next slide. And another thing that we do that has created a lot of impact in the suspensions is the phone collection. We collect phones every day in the morning, same as Garfield. And we've seen a difference in the behaviors, for sure. In the tier-two, we have our mental health counseling through One Life and the mental health counselor through the district. We also have El Central for our students that need more support with drugs and alcohol. We have a lunch patch club during lunch, of course, where the students that need more support, they meet and they have restorative circles with the teachers. They take turns during lunch to take care of them and make sure that they resolve their problems. We also have the check-in and check-out SICO, which is something that we do for the students. It's a more targeted behavior intervention support for them. And one of the strategies that has proven to be very efficient are the meetings with the families. So both myself and Cynthia and also Michelle, we meet with our families when there's any problem, and we bring them with our students, and we have conversations, and those definitely have helped them. And of course, the restorative meetings that we started to implement this year. And for tier-three, we have our ESS mental health therapist, and we also work really close with Jennifer Martinez in the Redwood City Police Department. And we have our multi-disciplinary meetings through the district as well. So what we've seen that has been working really well are the tier-one interventions, for sure. We've seen a reduced in the suspension rate. As well, we also, we don't only look at the suspension rate, but we also look at the amount of incidents. We call them incidents that we have. And so all the students that are participating in any of these strategies, either they stop having incidents or they reduce them. So we are going to continue with many of those items that you see over there. One of the pieces that both the family center, Cynthia and myself, have been talking about for next year is how to manage, how to make it so we can reach every single one of our families. We're reaching many of them, almost all of them, but we still feel like there's more work that we can do to make sure that all of them feel and have a voice in our school. So for next year, we want to change the schedule for sixth grade. We want to separate them from seventh and eighth. Nick and I talked about that. We both see the need. The students are still, you know, in a level different than the seventh and eighth graders. We are also going to offer electives within the same grade level. And we want to add another homeroom because that's when we do the social and emotional curriculum. And we're bringing restorative justice, professional development for all our teachers. So for the chronic absenteeism, again, what we wanted for the students to feel is that the school was the place for them. We want to make sure that when they come to our school, they feel welcome. If they are late, we always say, "We're so thankful for you to be here. Thank you so much for coming." All of us have the same attitude in our school. I think that's across classes, teachers, and staff. We know that for some of them it's hard to come to school. So we wanted to build that sense of community with them and build relationships. So all the tier-one supports that you see there, strategies are all targeted to that. So we've been doing something really cool that both Michelle and Cynthia put together, which is called the Attendance Wars. And the Attendance Wars, it's kind of like a contest that the students do once a month for the best attendance. So it's positive, and it works really well because it's across the grade and across the school. It's not individual attendance. So they have a wonderful graph that they can share with you if you're interested, where it shows the difference between before Attendance Wars and after Attendance Wars. We saw a different, like, honestly, a change. We also give them cards for being present and on time, and then we give them ice cream, or no sugar, I promise. And then we do, we also call the parents, and we text them when their students are late within periods, which is our responsibility, right? If they are late to school, it's something different. There might be something else happening. But when they're late in within periods, so we call them and we make them aware. We have two after-school programs. Cynthia, sorry, Cynthia will tell you more about it later. So the parents can stay, can let their kids there with us. And we also have an early drop-off because many of our families work really early, so we open the doors at 7:30. We have an attendance team. It's something that we are still working on. We have a lot of us working on attendance, but we have to make it more cohesive in a path. And we are doing a great job calling every family before the robocall goes up to make sure that the students are, why is the student not present, how we can coach the family to bring them to school? I said that they are sick or how much they are sick, to tell them they have to take them to the doctors, things like that. So the family center has been doing a phenomenal job with a questionnaire from McKinney Bento, and they found many more families that we thought we had that are homeless. And so we are bringing more kids to school every day, and it's all through the work with the family center. We've also done some home visits as well that worked really well. So yeah, those are tiers two and tier three. Thank you. We, like I said, I think all the work that all of us are doing is making an impact. Our MTSS Tosa and Community School Coordinator have been paramount in this work, for sure. The fact that we are working with FSS doing inclusion and equity, our students feel like, you know, their voices are heard. We saw, that's the data that you have, the attendance, the daily attendance to school has improved from this year compared, sorry, has improved this year compared to last year. And also, even in the Panorama survey, which was only in, you know, just a few months in the school, we saw an increase compared with last year in how the students felt connected with the adults. And the strategies that we believe that we could improve is that there's a meeting that happens between the SARB, which is the meeting that happens with the police and the social services. And that meeting, when we have that meeting with the families, what usually we found out is that we've tried everything. And so we haven't seen that 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 works as much as having the families with the social services and the police in this case. Because some of our families need to see that it's really serious to be in school. So at that point, we have two of them, and the students have been back in school, so they are very successful, the SARB meetings, for sure. Next year, we want to have a systematic approach where we have a path and knowing exactly what each of us are doing and be more cohesive as a team. And we want to keep rewarding them and increase the frequency and keep collecting the data so we know what are the needs. Thank you. Okay. The second goal is for our emergent bilinguals. And we base that on the reclassification numbers. Last year, we had five students reclassifying. So we set a target for nine, making sure that we were going to meet it. And we saw, you'll see in the third slide that we definitely did. So with that target, with those numbers, we wanted to make sure that we were able to retarget. So we have, in the tier-one, we have two teachers that teach ELD. We divide them by levels. So one teacher teaches ones and twos, and the other teachers teaches, teacher, teachers threes and fours. And we also have a newcomer academy. So our students have very, all our emergent bilinguals have very targeted interventions and very targeted learning in the classes. Excuse me. So that is something that we've definitely seen that it's working really well for our kids. We also have as a tier-two, a newcomer instructional aid that helps when she pushes in into the classes, in the content classes during the block days. She also pulls some small groups. And with the data that we, the last data we collected, we found out that some of our students still needed more intervention. So we started implementing in February in one-on-one intervention twice a week for those students that needed the most. So like I said, we know that is working because 33 students reclassified so far. We are still seeing more students that are this close to reclassify. So we are very proud of the work that every teacher in our school is doing to make sure that our emergent bilinguals are learning the content and getting ready to be bilingual. This is the strategy that we, no, you're fine. The strategy that I know that you've heard from other schools is the ELD curriculum, and I'm aware at this point that we are looking into something. So I'm very happy to know that at one point we'll have something that will help our teachers. So next year, we're going to add thinking maps. It's, many of us in the school have been trained before, and we know how important it is and the change they can make in the students. So a few teachers are going to go during summer. They're going to get trained, and they'll train the rest of the teachers. I just received the binders. And we want the enrichment period that we have, we're going to restructure it a little bit so the students can swift within six weeks or eight weeks, depending on the data. So the targeted intervention is more towards what they need. And then the last goal, it's the achievement goal, I call, but for me, it's also the growth goal. And it's to see how our students are growing. And we are doing the iReady right now, and it's the math iReady, and I'm so proud of our kids. They've worked so hard, and we're seeing a lot of growth. So you know all those numbers? Those are the fall targets for iReady reading. And then you have the iReady math and the targets for spring. So what we try to do is we try to look at what we had and even looking at the grades that they were going into and what we thought that they could reach. So if you want to go to the tiers, because I'm talking a lot, and I know that I have only 20 minutes. I know, it's a lot of data. So for tier-one, this year, we started with PLCs, so professional learning communities, which means that the teachers meet with their same grade level and also with their content level at least once a month. They also meet on Thursdays, and they look at the data from iReady. And what they do is they see what are the needs that the students have. And they do it as a whole group, but also individual to help them as a small groups. And they use, we got together over our weekend, and they learned how to use the PDSE cycles. So we are going on rotations to make sure that all those students are getting what they need. So we're also using the iReady standards mastery assessments. And the biggest accomplishment that I've seen is the student goal setting. They meet with their students, and they set goals before the iReady, within iReadies. And the students, I was proctoring a iReady test today, and they came and said, "How did I do?" So they really want to see how much they grow because it shows the bar going up. And we also give them pizza if they do. So it's really fun for them. They really like it. And you know, apart that they like it, I think it's important that to know that our students are starting to take ownership of their own learning, and they really want to know how they are doing. So for us, that's a major, major accomplishment. We also have targeted small group instruction during ELA block days, and we have also math during the enrichment time, where it's math intervention for those students that need it the most. And we also have writing for the students that need it. And then for tier-three, we have the SSTs, the 504s, the IPs, all the things that we know that work for that tier. And we have also an academic support period. No, you're fine. So do we know it's working? We think it is. We looked at the data. And I compare the data from last year, last year's growth, with this year's growth. And we are seeing more growth at this point of the year than we did last year. So to me, I share with that with the math teachers and the ELA teachers, and I think that's a huge success. So we are going to continue with everything we are doing. And we would like to add more because our teachers are doing phenomenal job. We got some teachers new this year, teachers that were already there doing a fantastic job. We have to be a little bit more cohesive. So the things that one side doing that are working, the other ones can do. So we're working on that. And SFS is working, is helping us in that direction. So we want to start using some research-based strategies. Those are some examples. Thinking maps will help a lot for that. We also want to add an enrichment math reading period for students at real level to accelerate their learning. That means that this year, we focus a lot on the students that needed more help. We also want to focus on the students that can retire. And then we also want to make sure that not only ELA is taught in the ELA class, but it goes also to the content classes. So those are the things that we are thinking on about next year. Okay. So right now, you're going to see our beautiful things that we did in our school. Cynthia has prepared a beautiful presentation. And you can go ahead. So first of all, we're going to talk to you about the school events. You see everything purple because we are very proud of our color. And we are Bulldogs. And we cheer Go Bulldogs every morning. So you have all the school events there that we've done this year. I'm not going to go through all of them. But I want you to know that it's all based on the students and making sure that they feel that community that we are trying to build at MIT. We want to make sure that our students feel that MIT is their house, sorry, their home, a place where they want to go. So you see pictures from Yosemite. We were able to take all the students that wanted to go to Yosemite, went to Yosemite. We gave scholarships, full scholarships to some of them. And we also provided, and Cynthia will talk to you more about that, gear to all of them. We partnered with a company, and they and they were able to loan it to us, and we returned it. And so all of them had the gear that they needed to go on hikes. So those are them having fun and enjoying our assemblies and the Unity Days and the sports. We have now, if you want to come, we have a tournament. We have a soccer tournament happening at lunch. And then we'll have also the basketball tournament at lunch as well. So yeah. We're going to go to the next one. I want to give time to Cynthia. And what we are most proud of, all of us, is our students' voice. We believe in their voice from anything, more than anything. We gave them the Panorama Climate Survey, and we took from there the areas that we needed to improve. And so we partnered with the Tosas from the district, the middle school Tosas. They've been coming to our school at least once a month. And we have been collecting street data with our teachers and looking at what the kids feel, the check-ins. You know, they felt that the teachers didn't care much for them, so we wanted to tackle that right away. And so they created a lot of systems, and they're checking in with them, collecting more data. So we are hoping that when we get the next Panorama survey, our scores will go up. Our students created all the lunch class we have in school. They selected what they wanted to do. They found a teacher to sponsor it. They had a fair where they had to convince everybody where to go and enjoy their class. We also have 67 students in leadership class. They create and organize and supervise everything. They even vote in the school council. They also selected their spirit days, voted by them, the lunch sports tournament. We gave them a survey recess, so they want, what do you want for recess? And we provide it. We just want them to feel that we listen to them. And is that the time?
No.
It's like, you've gotten too much. Okay, so you asked us to, you asked us to see what changed we saw with all those actions. So we put them there. And mostly, if you see, there's a commonality, and it's the student engagement and the decrease of behaviors. That is for sure the main, the main topic in all of them. So I've talked for a long time, and now Cynthia cannot talk to you about the other two cool things. So thank you.
Hello. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here and present some of this. Again, my name is Cynthia. I'm the community school coordinator. This is actually my second year at MIT, but I consider it to be the first as a community school coordinator because last year, we really spent a lot of the time getting to know the community, getting to know what partnerships we needed to bring in and what would best work for our families. And so I'm excited to share a little bit about that today. And so for our parent outreach, a lot of the things that we have here, similar to what you've already seen in other schools, like May's Days and Cafecito, school site council, back-to-school night, and open house. And, you know, daily attendance emails and things like that. But I'm really excited to share some of the other things that we've added on this year. Things like our volunteer opportunities, which I know are still very low. We're still hoping to bring a lot of our parents in to be participating in our events. And I know it's hard for some of them for different reasons, but this year, we've had them go as chaperones to our Yosemite trip, which was really cool. They're there in the mornings, helping us with that cell phone pickup and greeting the students as they're entering McKinley. And they're active in our activities after school, such as our school dances. One of my favorite things that we have just started is our Family Center Breakfast, which is not the same thing as Cafecito. It's something in which the parents are actually putting together. We don't have an agenda that's put on by us. Really, they're the ones that are bringing in the topics, things like, how do we get to come into the school and volunteer? What's the process like? How do we sign up for Power School? Can you help us? And things like that. They also bring Lotería. If you've ever played, so fun, and we have prizes for them. And you know, we have a breakfast, we have food, I've known to make some killer scrambled eggs. So if you want to join our next one, it's March 31st at 8:00 AM at the family center. But really, it's just been a place where the parents have come and started to build their own community there at MIT. And it's been, the outcome of that has been really great. We've also had a zumba-thon. I was not present at that because I don't think anyone wants to see my dance skills. But her parents were there fundraising and they were running the whole thing. It was their idea. And they created the, the fires and, and spread the word. And we've also participated, participated in activities with our eighth grade families. Susanna has been putting together a specific newsletter for our eighth grade families. But Leslie, our family center administrative assistant and I have created office hours where parents just get to come meet with us one-on-one and really get to know what that process is like. And we help them register for high school. Kathy, our vice principal, and I are also working right now on some fun trips where the kids are actually going to get to go to the high schools, check them out, talk to people and also bring those high schools in at our school. So we're really wanting not to just get them excited about high school, but get them ready about what that's going to be like. Yeah, we can go to the next one. Thank you. And specifically with community schools, which is where I'm, that's, that's my main point. And some of the things that we've done with our extended learning programs, it's really not just, it's take this name and make it for what it is. They're not just after school programs. Together with Enrique, we've worked hard on bringing new, new things in, but also making it a place where they are learning and it is a place where kids want to be. We brought in mentorship programs to our extended learning programs. We have glam, which is students from Stanford and Palo Alto High School coming in and teaching our girls about advanced math once a week. We have Enrique brought the music program there. And so really making that a place where they're not just, it's not a daycare, but where they're learning and they're participating and growing as individuals. Just two weeks ago, we started with work ed. And again, one of my favorite things has been bringing our family center tutoring program. It all started from a teacher that said that he couldn't really communicate with some of our students who are still becoming bilingual. And he wanted to provide a space where they, he knew that they were going to be able to understand their homework and how to do this, but it didn't just stay there. We had, we had eighth graders who are bilingual, who said, we also want to learn how to be leaders. And so now the families, the family centers open twice a week. And where eighth graders come in and they are helping their peers who don't understand English yet to complete their homework and understand what the class was about that day. And then we have about forty percent of our students who are participating in some sort of mentorship program like Friends for Youth, Los Ayudantes, Spark, Re Evolution and El Centro. Our mental health counselor has done an amazing job at connecting our students with not just our onsite counselors, but also programs that are off sites and making sure that not just our, our students, but as a community school, our families are receiving the mental health support that they need. And family, and finally, some of our goals that we've achieved this year are our jacket drive, which it just was an idea that we had. We weren't sure we were going to be able to put together, but in December, we were able to provide a sweatshirt jacket or coat to every single student in our school. As well as a fidget, which later on turned into a district wide donation, which every single school in the district was able to receive, receive at least four boxes of fidgets. We also partnered up like Susanna mentioned with a great organization that was, that allowed us to allowed us to give ninety percent of our students going on the Yosemite trip, some nice gear. So not just so that for they could stay warm, but fashionable like Patagonia and North Face stuff. So yeah, they were looking good on their trip. I've also partnered up with Katrina to not just open up our family center for our McKinney Vento families to come and receive food resources, but all of our McKinney Vento families in the non-community schools to come in and receive some, some food resources. We don't have a food distribution at MIT, but we are working with programs like One Life or Verbal Family Services to provide, to, to send out families to receive, receive those food resources. We give out backpacks. The Youth Unlimited Bus Pass Program. And specifically, one of my favorite parts about our family center is the support that we've been offering our newcomers. That is when our, our families come in, we meet with them one-on-one. It's a program that was built before I even came in. And thankfully I have Liz here as a mentor who has supported me in putting this together at MIT. And we've learned amazing stories of students and families who are coming in and have struggled so much to get here. And so we're so lucky to open up our doors and offer these services. We get to meet with parents and go through things like what is a, what is power school? And how do they read grades? Because maybe that's not something that they did in their countries. And so we go over that and go through the codes and what that means. We also are talking about the importance of attendance and why we really need their students to be at school. And we've seen a great increase in when parents get to learn and understand what that is. And so that's also a way to out, to do some parent outreach by bringing them in. And I'm so excited just get to be a little part of, of the story of these kids and the amazing things that they will get to do. And the family center is just so grateful to be able to be a part of, of the story of every single student at MIT. So thank you.
So here are our concluding comments. We don't have much to ask. I think we are very humble as a school. The only thing that we, that I personally think that will benefit most of our students in our community will be to have a full-time assistant principal. Just because sometimes, you know, having consistency across the week where the admin can be available for the teachers, for the students, for the families. Not only to resolve the problems, but anything that arise during the day. It helps. Three hundred thirty teenagers are wonderful and we love them. And sometimes they give us a little bit of hard time, not hard time, lot of work, which is fine. We love them. But having a full-time assistant principal will be very good for us. And then, but most important, I think what we would want to ask all of you is to change a little bit the mindset with MIT. Because right now, our population has changed, I guess, this year. The, the percentage of free and reduced lunch right now is the second highest of the district. And so we would like to see our students receiving resources. So because they have a lot of potential and they can reach really high. We just need to have a little bit more of those equitable resources in our, in our school. And lastly, we just want you to know that we are Bulldogs and with that comes empowerment and so many possibilities. And we want the community to know that our students are amazing and they can do anything. So that's it.
Donna, you can stay up at the podium.
Sorry. Thank you very much for the presentation. It was great. And I'll go ahead and turn to any of you that want to go ahead and any questions or comments.
Thank you. Great presentation. Really exciting. Susanna, to hear all the work that's going on there. And thank you Cynthia for telling us about the community school updates. I just, as we're hearing about all the powerful work that the community schools are doing, I'm just reflecting back on how I'm so grateful that that program's been expanding in the Redwood City School District and is on six campuses now. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, it's, it's just, it's such, so good to hear that reinforcement. It, there's that slide on the suspensions and behaviors and stuff. Wow. I mean, it sounds like there's been just some remarkable transformation over the last couple of months. The unity days, if it's as effective as it sounds, I mean, that's just remarkable. So that was really, really inspiring to see. And then the reclassification rates and just seeing that go from five to thirty-three. Another one of like, there's just a lot of growth and, and accomplishment there. I think we're, I'm going to speak for my fellow board members. I'll let them speak for themselves. But I think we're all with you on the, it's the growth, not the, you know, not the where it ends up being. And so but for reclassification, it is nice to get to that final part. But we know that every student that comes in and particularly in six, seven and eight, they're coming in at different levels. And I really, really liked seeing the differentiated strategies that you're taking for your level ones, twos versus level threes and fours. I think I appreciate the call out for the mindset shift. I think as the whole district, we are working on that whole entire mindset shift across. And I know many, many people have been working on this for years. And so I think that that's an important thing to remind us. Specifically here for MIT, but for many of our schools where the, there's a high concentration of need and how we can be stronger in supporting that. I didn't really have anything that was a particular question in there. So I just wanted to say that I enjoyed that. I think I had one other thing that the family center, or the attendance wars, that was the other one that sounded like. I don't know. It sounds like you have a lot of good strategies that you're pulling in, that you're seeing some meaningful effect from. And so it's just wonderful to hear about the strategies and the impact at the same time and how you're experiencing them on the school. So thanks again for presenting.
Thank you.
All right.
That way people at home can hear me because people here can always hear me. So thank you so much, Susanna and Cynthia for the presentation. That was great. Thanks to all the teachers who are here. Shout out. You guys have all had a long day. And we love having you in the boardroom again. I know we had a long few years where everybody was at home zooming in to different calls. So anyway, it's really nice to see all of you. Welcome and thank you for supporting your principal. So yeah, I loved so much of what I saw and I, I really agree with Mike, you know, just the progress that we're making. And we know that, you know, COVID was really hard for everybody. It was really hard for some students and families more than others. And clearly MIT has a school of families that, you know, COVID was hard. And I really appreciate seeing the growth that we've seen compared to last year to this year. This is what we want to see. We were seeing a lot of growth before COVID. And so it's great to see it kind of coming back as we're getting back on campus and just being able to do more things in person. And I do think, I really appreciate all that you said about the welcoming environment for the students, for the families. Some of that personal attention that you're giving, you know, to our newcomer parents and just all of our parent, our family members. I mean, that's huge. And I'm sure goes a long ways, right? To just help them be integrated right away into what's going on. And I know it takes extra work. So I really appreciate all you're doing there. I love the student voice. I mean, I'm so, that's so important. And just the ownership around their academic goals, around their, you know, goals they just may have for themselves in terms of where they want to be and this year and maybe in the next few years. So that's really wonderful. I mean, sixty-seven kids in a leadership elective. Did, did at some point you're like, oh my gosh, everybody wants to be a leader. So that's fantastic. I mean, that's, that, you know, that so much of, you know, middle schools, it's, I mean, the academics are important, but they're also learning so many other skills that are going to help them be successful in life. So I loved hearing all the different things. The peer tutoring, where you've got the bilingual students helping the students who are learning English. Love that. And you know, it's so beneficial for both students, right? For on, on both sides. So that's great. And, oh, and then, you know, the school events. I know when my daughters were in middle school, the Yosemite trip was one of the highlights for them. And I'm such an outdoor enthusiast. I love that we're giving the opportunity to every kid who wants to do it. It's probably the first time that some of them have been camping, certainly. Out in the wilderness, you know, in a place where there's snow. I don't know. I don't know when you went, but
February and some of them didn't, hadn't seen any snow before.
But you know what I mean? I mean, like those experiences, they're going to remember the rest of their lives. And I think those are things that it's, it's hard to equate with a score. And yet it's so important because they'll be able to take the life lessons they learned there and, and move on. So anyway, thank you for making that happen as well. And you know, lots of other things that I really, oh, I did want to say, I really appreciate you having the early drop off at seven thirty AM. Again, that's just another thing that really helps our working families and our students be safe. So, so thanks for doing that as well. Of course. All right.
Thank you so much for the presentation and more importantly, for the work that you do for the kids. So, and thanks so much for all the teachers and staff in attendance and online as well for, for looking out for the kids. So go Bulldogs. Thank you, by the way, to you and to Liz for putting together the supplementary materials with the Instagram distributions. That was great. I do think that we're looking at deltas for how we're able to move the kids in a positive direction. I think we have a long way to go on that front in terms of the meeting of the SIPs goals, just to call that out. But what I really love about the approach that I see loud and clear in the presentation is a real scientific experimentation framework for acknowledging the, you know, the things that need to improve about the school and trying lots of different things to see what, what works and what resonates. Seems like Unity Days have really worked. Phone collection, that's awesome. Home visits, I know haven't been rolled out uniformly across the districts. It's really great to hear that that landed really well with, with, with the school. The attendance wars was neat. And I'm a huge fan of metacognition. So the student goal setting is like, man, that's, it's so awesome. And it's also the literature is crystal clear that that's really effective. So I, I'd love for the things that you've tried that are working really well, not only to very obviously continue, but to have that infect the other schools in the district and even other surrounding districts. So if we could give you a megaphone to shout out like, hey, this venue is a little bit of that, but just for the approaches that you've tried, that you've found efficacious. I'd like those learnings to be, to be replicated. So I think that's, that's really powerful. And that includes like the, the student peer tutoring, you know, that's, it's so cool to have the eighth graders helping out. I, I want to say, great dotted line. What, what are the other student peer teaching programs that you're going to roll out above and beyond that? Because there's excellent evidence as well that teaching to learn is itself very effective. So I'd love to see that expanded to more subjects and more venues. So it's just really wonderful to see that. So thank you so much for, for your work and I'll, no promises, but I'll see if I can drop in the family center breakfast.
And, and the tournament.
Apparently the scramble breaks are pretty good.
Well, great. Again, thank you so much for the presentation. And just to remind everyone, I graduated from accounting a few years ago and so it is dear to my heart. I do appreciate your leadership. I do want to let you know, I'm not sure if you were copied on an email that some of your teachers sent to us, just saying very wonderful things about you. So I, after this presentation, definitely your leadership skills show. They, some of their comments were like, you're an innovative visionary. I mean, they went on and on and I do want to apologize. I didn't respond to the email. I read it late last night. One of the things is amplifies teachers and students' voices. And we heard it loud and clear at today's presentation. I want to say that you said student voices three, maybe four times. You talked about team and being cohesive. And again, that is what we want to see in the Redwood City School District. And we have seen it with other principals. I know you are taking in the principal leadership this year and I think you're doing a wonderful job as your teachers are saying that about you. So I think that's great. One of the things that I do want to point out, just because maybe some of the people in the public don't know. I really love your newsletter. I believe you and Rosable are the only ones that do the actual translation simultaneously or automatically. I don't know how you want to say that. And so to me, that's great. Then as a parent, you don't have to go and click on the translation button. It's there. And I do want to give kudos to you because I believe you are the only one that has actually linked tonight's board meeting and you announce that to your parents. So those, I'm, I'm not sure how many parents are actually online. But I think that it's important. That's how you get parent engagement. Again, going back to suspension rate, all the strategies that you're doing, I think it's great. The chronic gaps and teaism. We all know that that is an issue with district wide and probably statewide. And hopefully things will get better. Again, kudos to the teachers. You mentioned some of them are getting summer training. So they're there for you, with you, and you're there with them. So we appreciate that, I'm sure as a board. When you talk about I ready and the tier one, you talk about getting together on the weekends. I mean, we know teachers don't get paid for the weekend work. They do. And so we do appreciate, I don't know. They do. Maybe they do. Okay, so I mean, I, I think it's great. It's just, you know, obviously all schools and our districts are great, but when we see a leader like you show up and, you know, you've been here for what? A little bit?
Two years.
Two years and five months.
Okay. Time flies so fast too, right? So, you know, kudos to you. I mean, I don't want to, a lot of the things that they said, I don't want to repeat, but again, it's a wonderful presentation. Everything's, you know, moving along. Hopefully what with, when you talked about reclassification, I mentioned when the Taft. Gave their presentation. I remember attending the graduation and one of their students had just been in the country for like four months and they actually reclassified. At your site, right during classic reclassification. So when you talked about in your presentation about. All the. Extra help that they're actually getting us newcomer. I appreciate that. Again, I was a newcomer myself at one point. And so it is very helpful to know. And to feel welcome Cynthia. I mentioned it before to other. Community. School community. I'm sorry, what's your title? Community coordinator. And I appreciate the enthusiasm because as a parent, you want to be able to feel welcome and get that. Information and the resources that the family needs. So again, thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. So. I'm going to start out by, Cynthia mentioned that we got an email and we got the email last evening. Mr. Lee, I see you there. Hello, Mr. Lee. Mr. Lee, yourself and along with other staff members that are in the audience right now. I want to thank you so much for this email and I will forward it to you. It is an email that expresses. What a leader should be at a school site. So what you have done, if you, you have come to McKinley and I know you hadn't been with us very long, coming from Colorado Springs. She and her husband made that journey. He works in another district. We won't mention that other district. But anyway, you made that journey as as an assistant principal. And definitely we are a lot different than Colorado. So with that being said, and then moving to becoming a principal. Which you said, that's what I want to do. I can do it. And you are doing it. You definitely have taken the bull by the horns and moved it in a different direction. And so. I want to congratulate you and also the staff that is here tonight, supporting you. Without a staff supporting you, you cannot be the leader. It will not work. It will not work. So for bringing that together. And especially with what is said in this email. It, it's fantastic. It's absolutely fantastic. So. Your presentation also did. Talk about. Our emerging bilinguals, which I like that term better than. Yells, which we have been learning about asset and deficit language that we use and you're taking it to that level. Thank you so much. And then also the piece about street data. That's the book that, you know, Liz had given us to read and then share out what, you know, what we're learning from it. And with that being said, and then. We also had Cynthia, who has been working with Enrique. And for those of you that don't know, don't know, Enrique Calderon was, was. Put into one of our, one of the Seminole County office, you know, news releases that we get. About the wonderful programs that he is helping develop with you. So kudos for going after that and seeing what else you can get for MIT. So there's a lot going on. And then last night you did an impeccable job. We had. And I see Mr. Torres is on the, on the call tonight. We had a meeting with them. Of. A cafeteria full of rising fifth, sixth and seventh grade parents at Garfield. Knowing that, you know, there's a teacher shortage and what's happening and and Susanna came and she presented about MIT. And what you presented and how you had those parents enthused, even though, as you said, we know this is your home. Garfield is their home. Let me bring you to my home. And which is MIT and which expressed here tonight. Thank you so much for doing that. It made my job, my portion of speaking a lot easier. Because it was very difficult years ago, going through this and doing something similar, something similar when we're closing schools. And there was a parent there that had experienced that. And that's where she went. And now it's happening again. So you did an amazing job tonight, a fantastic job last night with Miss Torres. Keep up the good work. Right choice for MIT and for the staff that's here. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Now we know you have to work tomorrow, get up early and get ready for those MITs and MIT or Bulldogs, I should say. Thank you for coming. I, I enjoyed, I really love that. If you're late, thank you for coming. Thank you for being with us. Great.
Thank you.
You don't have to stay for the rest of the boarding, the MIT staff. I know you have other things to get ready for for tomorrow. Thank you all for coming. I guess we have Mr. Nick is next, next, right? Energy.
So good evening, Nick. Hi. Do you want to introduce the people that you brought?
I got a little. So good evening, everyone. Thank you, School Board, Dr. Baker, for giving us some time to share the school. My name is Nick Farias, President of Kennedy School. I'm flanked by my awesome admin team, Ms. Chandra Leonardo. Mrs. Calderon, Mr. David Camarena. Although I think we're going to be sharing, we really do believe in team. We work together. Kennedy's a large school and our teamwork is what makes it go forward. Adding further, we've, I've been two years at Kennedy School and I have been blessed by having a really supportive, supportive community. Incredible teaching staff. With diverse skill sets that have been supporting our work and our students the last two years. Okay, which has been great. People who are online, a little, a little about Kenny, we are the comprehensive middle school in R C S D. We represent the diverse programs and the many different schools. They come to us, we graduate those students. And our population represents, it represents our city. Okay. The group here in front of you, we were not just educational leaders, we were middle school teachers. Which as a middle school teacher, teaching middle school, it goes in your, gets in your blood. I couldn't, I say this, I couldn't teach elementary. We need this sort of bridging the gap from middle school to high school. That's our biggest part of our job is getting our students ready for high school. And all the work we do for our sixth to seventh grade is that conversation with our students and our families. We have split up this presentation. Each of us will take a goal. And then we'd be happy to take any questions. We love the work we do. We've supported some of your students and we hope to continue to serve our community the best we can. Ms. Leonardo, would you take one?
I will take it away. Good evening. My name is Chandler Leonardo. I'm one of the assistant principals at Kennedy. Prior to being assistant principal, I was a teacher at Kennedy. I love Kennedy. I'm all about Kennedy. So. I'm a Kennedy cougar. All right. You got it, David. All right. So the first goal I really want to focus on is our suspension, our goals for decreasing suspension. And decreasing our chronic absenteeism. So you can see last year, spring of twenty twenty two, around this time, we had twenty six suspensions. Our goal. For this spring was to have twenty suspensions or less. And some of the things that we are doing, we really want our students to enjoy coming to school. I love school as a kid, but I also know that there's sometimes students don't love school. So I always like to engage my students, talk with them. I do morning announcements and I always tell students, hey, if you have any problems or issues, come see me. So a lot of times you'll see a line outside my door. I'm. Constantly working with students and working with our teachers as well. And one of the things that we really focus on our core values, our pause. Making sure students are prepared, having a positive attitude, making wise choices and being safe. And we really encourage our teachers to acknowledge the positive behaviors. I always tell teachers, you got to remind yourself, think about when you were in middle school. Okay. And I know that sometimes that's difficult to do. But sixth, seventh and eighth grade are very difficult years in a child's life. And so I always try my best to make sure that we acknowledge those positive behaviors that students are doing. Our students, our teachers recognize this by giving our cougar cash. Our students love their cougar cash. We have a PBIF student store where they can buy different things that our PTO puts in our student store. We have morning shout outs every week. Our teachers submit names for different, how students are showing their paws. Students enjoy hearing their names in the morning announcements. We have acknowledgement alliance, project resilience in our social studies classes. We have monthly culture assemblies that Mr. F puts on every month, a different focus. And at the end of those assemblies, we recognize our students of the month, that teachers nominate, they get a treat. With their certificate. The other thing that's really big at Kennedy is our summer bridge program. We know that students can be very anxious about coming to middle school. So we do take time over the summer. To introduce them to Kennedy, few short days or a few, the days eight to twelve. Monday through Friday, they come in, they get accommodated to the school, they learn about Kennedy, and it makes that transition in August a little bit easier. So we welcome our students to come at that time. We also, this year, we have a homeroom section once a week where students can actually have time to learn some executive functioning skills, checking emails, Google Calendar. Taking time to goal set, look at their I ready data. And we have school dances that students are really excited about. We have one coming Friday. We would love for you all to be there with us. We would greatly. Appreciate that. Yeah. So school dances. So I'm there at lunch this week selling out, selling tickets. We have trimester honor roll. So we try to make sure that Kennedy is a great and fun place to be for our students. And we can go to our next slide. So here are some of our tier two and tier three things. So one of the things that Liz Calderon and I do on a weekly basis, along with our mental health counselor and school psychologist. Is screen all the referrals that come through. One of the benefits to me being on that particular team is I know a lot of the students, I pride myself, David, Nick, and I pride ourselves on making sure we know students. I set a goal, I want to know every student's first and last name. I want, I sometimes, how, where, because that's my goal. I want to make sure I put faces and names together. So the benefit of having those screen team meetings, we'd see a name. Oh, I know this about the family. Oh, hey, this needs to happen. So students can get that specific individual support that they need. We have car grief group, we have friends for youth onsite, Pride El Cindro. And then our tier three are mental health counseling for students that need it. We really are grateful that the board allows to have an additional mental health counselor. Has proved to be very successful this year. And we also have ESS counting for students that might have an IEP that need that tier three. Some things that we know that for sure are helping us reach our goals are for sure are PBIS. We have almost six thousand purchases and counting. Students ask for that student store often. We know we have some of our high flyer students. That one of our students barely realized for some reason in December, wait, the student store, all I can buy things and really was trying. Their best to make sure that they were on time for class, bringing a Chromebook. So that kind of changed their projection this school year. We also have a really robust tracking system where teachers can enter data. We look at that data and figure out how we can be better. And so we are currently on target this year to be under our suspension rate. And one of the things that we really like to do in lieu of suspension. Is really making sure students have access to any groups, lessons about certain things, because most importantly, we know it's important for students to be at school. So whatever we can do to make that happen, that's what we do. Some things that we know that we are working on. So next year, we're in track to increase our enrollment. We have about seven hundred fifty students. That's what we're projected to have. Looking at our data, we realize that we may need to go back to having our sixth graders separate from our seventh and eighth graders. Students often talk about the lunch lines are very long. They want to get lunch. Things are very busy. So we're looking at a different bell schedule for next year. We also know that. It's not just important to be PBIS and word, we need to do it indeed. So it's really important for us to be aligned across all grade levels, making sure we're modeling and teaching students the behaviors that we really want to see. And so that's the work that we're going to put in. So for next year, that all of our teachers were all on the same page. So there's consistency across sixth, seventh and eighth grade. This year we've had great success with teaching our sixth grade students. We had a boot camp that showed them how to access. Our bully report, access through clever, different technologies. And so we would like to continue that for seventh and eighth grade. Especially since we'll be having new students coming to Kennedy in seventh and eighth grade years. Our eighth grade year. And so the other thing, it's really hard to say specifically which strategies are less effective. But we know that we might have some students who might not care about cougar cash, who might not care about student of the month. So what we need to do. As an admin team is really sit down and figure out how we're going to make sure we reach every single student, not just, you know, the select few. So we're really trying to make sure that we do that going forward. Chronic absenteeism. So we know the pandemic has really, really, you know, been a number on our absenteeism. We have parents that of course make sure the messaging has been keep students home if they're sick. We've kind of gone, turned a corner there. So really, we need to make sure that we're focusing on this communication with parents. We know that this absenteeism is not just a thing for our site. It's a district issue and a state issue as well. So one of the things that we're doing our best to make sure that we do. Is having consistent communication, making sure our weekly newsletters to parent communicate what it means to make sure. That you're communicating to us when your students are out. We now have an attendance clerk who makes sure she's calling families every day, sending out blackboard reminders to families really important. Parent outreach, Liz and I for our tier three have done home visits this year. I am not opposed to going to homes, knocking the doors, bringing, making sure students are getting to school. Of course, we have SSTs. And SARP meetings as well. Strategies that we know are working is the communication, the weekly phone calls have been very effective. We noticed, we made a big push in November for attendance. And we saw an increase in our ADA to two point three percent from November to February this year. So that's really awesome. One of the things that we really need to make sure that we do. Next year, what we would like to do is make sure we look at our data from this year, figure out who, who's having some struggles getting to school. What are those barriers? And making sure we reach out to those families earlier in the year, August, September, communicating with them and figuring out how, what can we do to work together? To make sure that your student is in school. The other thing that we really want to focus on is our schoolwide incentives. So we know our students love student of the month. We know they like their honor roll, but we really want to look at not just people have students that have perfect attendance, but if you have improved performance. So maybe you didn't do so well trimester one, but you show some growth trimester two. We want to recognize that. We think that's really important. And the other thing that we are working on is making sure that our attendance is following our MTSS framework that we're doing here in our district. And establishing a task force that meets biweekly, quarterly to make, to make sure that we're addressing our tier two and tier three attendance concerns. Oh, David. Yeah, it's your turn.
Enthusiasm and. Hi, everybody. My name is David Camarena. I am the other vice principal. I came to Redwood City from Oakland in nineteen and I've been blessed to be working with these kind folks. Nick came later and he's been doing a great job. So we have a lot of banter within ourselves and we, we gripe with each other and we laugh. And so. Anyway, my job is to talk to you about our English language reclassification. So. You know, we were trying to get everybody to move up a level, right? That's, that's, that's tall order, but we're going to, we're going to get it done. We are trending in the right direction. Which is good. So we've seen growth in the last year and we're looking at improving this as we move forward. So it's looking good for us. We were, we managed to reclassify forty one kids, students, excuse me. This past spring or recently, and we're looking at. Having some more at the end of the year, especially we're in the midst of, of, of doing Outpack. So we're, we're, we're working with our teachers to make sure that. We get that taken care of. And I wanted to talk to you a little bit about what we're doing in our ELD classes. So if you looked at the dashboard, sixty five percent of our, I want to say, I'm going to still susan term, emerging bilinguals. Made progress. So that's one of our higher points. That's where we're really, really working with and we got to thank. All of our teachers for doing that. So we're proud of that. The, the ELD groupings are working for us. So we have a teacher. Who is dedicated to teaching ELD in sixth and seventh grade. I'm going to backtrack a bit because when we do scheduling and once we put all our ELS, we actually got to know the kids a lot. So I know. We know most of them, I want to say, but when in terms of our emerging or newcomer folks, I know them all. So. We got to the point where we could identify if this kid, this student has made enough growth to go into a, a higher level ELD with Ms. Lapoya or not. So. When it's time to build a schedule, we're actually looking at that because it's really important for those kids to, to be placed accordingly. And that's part of the groupings that we're looking at. We're going to get even more strategic as we move forward with that. So that's, that's sixth and seventh grade and she's very seasoned. She's doing a very good job and we accredit a lot of that growth to her. In eighth grade, it's integrated. So we have now EL emerging. What did she say? I'm going to stick with the old one. ELS. Nick was, was adamant about having our eighth grade students in ELD and expository be together, which is working out. And, and all those teachers, all our EL, ELA teachers in eighth grade have a track record for, for higher than average scores across I ready. ASP and, and Outpack. So we're looking forward to that. One of the things that I've been talking to them about moving forward is. Really looking at ELD and because we have a Spanish immersion program as well that, that includes our newcomer folks, our students. So. We really want to see how we can. So we really want to see how we can uh work with our teachers and, 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 and doing assessments and work that is really targeted to each domain. So we're talking about reading, writing, listening and speaking and how that can really be done. Um, I was a Spanish teacher for many, many years and I, I did second language acquisition um teaching. So what I did was I based all my assessments on my four language modalities. And I was able to get really good data and I would be able to show to parents and kids, this is how while you're doing your reading and this is all what you're doing in writing. That's one of the things that we want to work with as we move forward, because I think it's important for you, uh, you know, I speak four languages. My first language is Spanish and then next was English. I learned German and Portuguese in the university. But one of the things that I was really proud of is uh, uh, I really strove to improve all my modalities I, as, as I got older with my languages. So I, I took that in high school and I did, when I was a teacher and I did that. So I'm hoping that we could do that with our EL so that, so that they could see, you know, like you give them a report that has data from power school that we could actually build. I'm not doing so well on reading, maybe when it's that reading time, I focus some more, but then, oh, I'm doing a lot better in speaking. So that's kind of something that we're gonna try to put together um with that. Uh, our newcomer ELD, um, so we, we didn't get any staffing this year, so we had to, we asked the teacher to take it over, which did a great job. We have somebody now, so we have two ELD sections that are working and um. The, the teacher who just recently came, we put her actually to do some pushing and push out, so that's working out for us. So we're gonna be getting more students, but I build a schedule where the students can be seen um and pulled and help with their homework. Cause a lot of those folks are struggling just accessing curriculum because of the, of, of, they don't, their English is limited. So we're working on doing that. And we have an uh newcomer IA uh instructional assistant who is doing the same thing as, as this person. So we're having actually, uh, so some of these students are being seen not only by their ELD teacher, who also happens to be the pushing or push out person. And then they get uh, uh, the IA coming in to, to support, so that's helping us. Um, and we just, uh, we, we've been working on getting uh use, we're familiarizing ourselves with get ready, which is the newest uh. Um, you know, standard based program that we're gonna be using for ELs as we move forward. And then we also have system forty four, which is, is for struggling readers. So that's stuff that, those are things that we are putting together at Kennedy so that we can, you know, improve those Outpack scores. And, and really what we want is for kids to want to see growth, right? We're talking about growth where, you know, so if all we want is students to feel comfortable making that growth and. So a lot of our newcomers, they don't, they don't understand that growth is important. So it's, it's gonna be on us to be able to project that to them and make sure that, hey, you know, in the past, and we have seen some growth. So some of our kids who were in newcomer ELD last year are not in newcomer ELD now, they're in regular because they've seen that, we've seen that growth and I ready. And we also have gone to them on a personal level, so we know like maybe we, this person we can challenge and this one maybe needs another year and so on and so on, so. So I've already mentioned a lot of this in my conversation that I just had here, um, but we're gonna continue to work hard of. Kennedy yell is are scoring well and it's looking like we're turning in the right direction. One of the, just, and it's across the district and across the nation, the teacher shortage, it's hard to get a newcomer teacher, right? We are blessed to have somebody come in now um and start with us actually on February twenty, this past week of, I think, uh, February twenty seven, she started and we. Put up to speed, but that's just that, we, we really just need somebody in there who knows. Second language acquisition, how to really teach English to, to newcomers and, and, and um. Right now, we're doing what we can with the pullout and push in, so we're hoping that that has some fruit at the end of the school year. The integrated ELD is new, um, we're still evaluating that, we're gonna see if that's really gonna. Be something that we, we move forward with next school year, or if we go back to having more like an ELD teacher also teach just solely ELD for eighth grade. But it's gonna stay the same in sixth and seventh grade and we really want to continue working with um supporting our newcomers. And we have a lot of talented people at Kennedy that can, that could support us with that. We're lucky to have Mr. Baccaro who was able to come in and, and now we got him some help, so we're, that'll limit him to provide a little bit more one to one support with those particular kids. And now we have another teacher who can be setting in with, uh, sitting in with those folks in her own class and also doing that pullout and pushing that, that everybody needs. And it's um, and sometimes it's just sitting down with them and asking them, what can I help you with? You know, and that's, that's how we get started, cause you know, it's, some of these folks are, they don't, they barely reading their own language, you know? So it's, it's just really getting them to feel comfortable with the school system. And I think so far, we're doing a pretty, pretty amazing job with that. All right, are you okay?
Goal three, uh, uh, focusing on our CASP results and our I ready. So just people listening at home, CASP is sort of the end of the year assessment that sort of evaluates our school. And I ready is how we mon- monitor our growth throughout the year to prepare us for that assessment. So meeting with our families, then, then our staff at the end of the year with leadership of seeing our results. We, our goal is sort of a multi-year goal to reach pre-pandemic results for Kennedy on the CASP by two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. We dropped about five percent, five and a half, six percent uh in math and English from two thousand nineteen, twenty. It is a goal that we think that we can reach by two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. The strategies that we're gonna be sharing here are things that we have discussed with leadership uh in a, in order to help us reach those goals. It's a lot of the strategies were, uh, we projected uh the, the drop due to COVID last June. So the strategies were things that we put together last June that we're evaluating this year. Some of the strategies that we're gonna, I'm gonna be discussing, it's gonna take us about a year to evaluate their effectiveness and things that we may need to adjust. But we're excited with the progress going forward. Uh, so these are some of the, this is where we were and this is where we expect to go, we hope to get to. So there's just some of the goals I met and exceeded um from the year before, so we can keep going. And uh here as well for, for math, which is also, which has been a historical challenge uh for Kennedy School and then within their district. So we, I will discuss in a second some of the strategies that we discussed last June to implement for this school year, okay? Uh, some of our tier one stars, expositor reading, writing and ELD is a class that was developed in RCSD. Uh, Dr. Baker sent a few administrators, including myself, to innovate public school training for administrators. It's something we observed, it was an elementary school strategy, but that was used in middle school was like a power hour uh for reading instruction. Kennedy School did not use it over uh during COVID, during the COVID lockdown, we returned it last year. And we spent this year training two new teachers with that class. Our eighth grade staff is our veteran group who is experienced teaching the class, which received its highest results. But that class has uh shown results, it's an extra literacy class at school for our students, which we're very proud to return with. Uh, the next part's instructional rounds focus, uh, this is, I would say to our admin team, it's our favorite part of the job, is working with our teachers and our students. Uh, to find the most engaging instructional strategies to meet their needs. As a district, we do instructional rounds, we do instructional rounds within our school based on different needs. One is platinum ticket, platinum ticket and instructional rounds is about norming strategies within a school. We have content level teachers, science, history and math, but we all need to be teaching, we are all reading teachers. It doesn't fall on reading teachers to improve reading results, we all need to be on the same page. So platinum ticket, the precipice of it was to align strategies across all these content areas. We are still doing that here at Kennedy and we'll be discussing some of the things we've done this year and some of our next steps. Our big focus this year was uh standard aligning our classrooms and we did something new, which was aligning to the district frameworks of instructional rounds. Around uh student collaboration in class, which we all know engages students in the classroom. Students want to have structured educational talk and we launched that in December, finished up in January and we're having another round coming up in uh. Month or March, okay? Uh, some of our I ready data, I always like to think that all decisions we make at a school had to be data driven with some, with some endpoint. Uh, I ready is actually, we first started with during COVID, it was, it was not an assessment, I was sold on, it was really not goo- good, good given that test on Zoom. Uh, it does give us good data for our teachers that we use the data each uh, each, all our teachers meet and we find focuses. Um, we looked at the last assessment, informational text was a challenge and uh we'll talk, discuss in the next slide, how we were able to adjust within the school. And during one of an observations during a walkthrough with some families, some of our tier two interventions was zero period math, which is sort of a, a class I've been trying to get off the ground since before COVID. Uh, we got off the ground here with three classes, about sixty to seventy students. If we're gonna make up the learning loss, you, you can't make it up in a class period. It's a lot to ask of our teachers and uh we piloted this year, it's going great. After a hundred phone calls from me, we filled those classes, Miss Calderon, you're there channeling for those, that's fun phone calls. We're expected to do those again next year to fill those classes. The students are showing up every morning, teachers are enjoying the class and those classes thus far, it's very early, I don't want to make any person are growing at a higher rate than the other classes. Our math results were better than our ELA in the first rep, from fall to the winter on I rated, which is a rarity. Okay, uh, they're both moved, but this was good. Uh, second piece of tier two invention, this was a huge uh initiative that took the resource and RSP staff at Kennedy School, which is the best I've worked with in my eighteen years in Redwood City. Um, our, our, our RSP program at Kennedy School was uh, students were not in least restricted environment. Uh, they were not necessarily in an environment that based on their level. So we wanted to put them in the least restricted environment, which allowed more time in core content with expert teachers. And with resource support instead of that resource teacher being that core content. So we worked with our RSP staff and families to change the model. Um, uh, changing that model was a huge undertaking, we allocate one staff meeting every five weeks. And that staff meeting is focused specifically on these students led by an admin at each grade level and our RSP teacher serving those kids. And we go one at a time, what does a student need, how can we best support it? But one of the uh big uh, over my years has always been, I don't have time, teachers, teachers creek is like, I'm serving all these students, how do I meet this need? We are allocating the time at Kennedy School, how do we differentiate to meet those students' needs? It's been a huge undertaking, it has been hugely successful, mostly to the work of those RSP teachers uh who are exceptional. Tier two IP and RSP pullout has been exceptional and then there's other supports throughout the school that we have. That are for students can pop in and we communicate with them and our crew connects, our newsletters, our announcements daily for, for students to have that information. So here are some of the data points, uh, we had growth from fall to winter uh in I ready four percent on top. And then on the September to December on the bottom, seven percent less. Eighth grade isn't there, eighth grade was higher, was eight to nine percent and I equate that to our experienced staff who is experienced teaching the extra class, expository. Math had a six percent improvement uh in green from accurate to above and nine percent less on the, on the uh below grade level. Um, which is great with the moving forward. Uh, the next piece of data on the partner, I, I want to highlight because I had to pull it, cause I was trying to find data to show the program change for our RSP kids. So I took data from I ready, the same students pretty much from winter last, winter last year to winter this year. And see where students grow, quite a bit of growth in the change of model for our RSP kids. If they go to a more rigorous environment with supports, they can be successful instead of a pullout model that may work for a small class. But it's not the best environment for most students and it's working for most of our students right now, so we're really excited with that. And once again, this is early data, we're gonna keep sharing this, which raised or not seem to have, so we're still evaluating it, zero period math is on its, it's, it's an infancy. We're hoping to get a full year data to evaluate CASP results from this year to last year for these targeted students. Um, and uh targeted students and for expositor reading and writing, I, we're having a lot of success, we have a really strong eighth grade team. How can we share some of those strategies with some of our newer teachers that we've trained uh that are doing great, but how can we bring those strategies in there? So that's some of the work that we need to do next year. Uh, what are we considering changing? Uh, zero period math, we want to increase it, we're doubling down. So we'd like five seconds, I have, I have the teachers willing to do it for next year. Uh, continue work around district frameworks uh around alignment within the school, developing a Kennedy platinum ticket. We already started the first step at our recent staff meeting where we sort of went through a survey with staff and where we're at. And we're gonna be using that at our next staff meeting to sort of work with our English department, has to come from the teachers for us to really trade up buy-in, cause we have a lot of knowledge on the site. Um, and then that will be some of the work. And then once we have a model, we'll be using instructional rounds within the school site to evaluate as an admin team and then use leadership to adjust. It is, we have to do it as a team for it to be sustainable. Um, uh, core ELA and expo, uh, this is, once, this is a, once again, it's a scheduling thing. If we have these strong English teachers, if teachers, their feedbacks always, they want the same group of kids twice, it is very hard scheduling wise. But if the data shows that it needs to be done, we need to figure out how to do it. Okay, uh, conclusion, we'll show you some stuff about the school. Uh, school events, we have a myriad of school events, we have our musical March seventeenth to nineteenth, we have eighty, eighty students involved. So my experience musicals is brand new, last year I was uh introduced to a musical for the first time. It was absolutely insane, but incredible. The students were engaged and it's not just a student event, it includes families. It, because it's, everybody has to be part of it, eighty students, well, they have a double cast, I didn't know what those, what that meant, but I learned it. Uh, double cast, there is so many uh kids involved and it's, it's, it's going great, uh, so continue that, uh, no, we go back, back one. Go back one, close. Yeah, yeah. There, yeah, sorry, school events, uh, school dance we talked about, that's me, they're doing a selfie, uh, summer bridge, that's somewhere, summer bridge programs web. It's a mentorship program for our sixth graders, they have eighth grade mentors that we do activities once a month through this, through December. Uh, our, 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 use, our concert, our, our, our music program is exceptional. Uh, students are really engaged, those are our culture summers, we have our eighth grade culture summary tomorrow morning, they get to meet us in the morning and we can, we give them our spiel. And it should be fun, especially eighth grade, this is one of the last ones that we have with us, so we're excited, our color run's always exciting. I'm talking too fast, I apologize. Nice, uh, student voice, uh, we, as Miss Leonardo mentioned, Miss Kam, I mentioned too, uh, student, this is a middle school, we're talking to the kids every single day. What can we do to, what, what is working, what do we need to change? Uh, so there's just three things, the daily shout outs that we do every morning, just come by the school, you'll hear us in the neighborhood, Miss Leonardo's shouting them out. That was student feedback walking down the hall, Mr. F, last year you gave those shout outs that one day. Yeah, I remember that, uh, that was great, can we do that every day? We doing it every day, that was just a student who mentioned it and said, this is a great idea. Inter murals, which uh is that during lunchtime activities, the students are like, these are fun, uh, admin team. But how many emails have we received, were, were they making other requests for their intermural activities? Super Smash Brothers was not an admin suggestion, but it was hugely popular and it was at lunchtime. Okay, it was at lunchtime, not a short time, yes. Okay, 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 uh, uh. Uh, planned lunch adjutant was based on student feedback, Mr. F, Mr. Coming on, Miss, Miss Leonardo, the lines are too long, it takes us a long time. Uh, so we were already sort of planning that direction uh for next year, uh, so we're excited about that. And electives are extremely popular school, we have ex- expert elective teachers that are extremely strong and good at what they do and we are glad to have them. Parent outreach, uh, we could connect, I try to send the board with my little wacky videos, I really enjoy doing that. Uh, just, I'll just highlight one thing, principal's coffee, all the schools do it. Uh, we are pleased that Kennedy, that every principal's coffee is a school tour to see a program at our school. So we give tours to our families, not to other families, to our families. Each month after principal's coffee, we take a walk around our school, we go into the classrooms. I'm a strong believer, if we're, if we're gonna talk about it, people, parents need to see it and parents work and we understand it's hard. But we've been doing this since, since the COVID restrictions left, it was, it was the first, I, I don't like doing principal's coffee on Zoom. Parents should be at the school site, we should be able to s- see what we're doing and we show our challenges. I believe honesty is the best way to go in this position and uh we try to be as honest as possible. Uh, parent information sessions, we had a uh PTO sponsored uh author, Michelle E. Card, her book is titled. But it was what, twenty-five parents showed up this morning at twelve o'clock, uh, talk about how to deal with raising a middle school child. Uh, it was great, great questions, our PTO is extremely supportive. Uh, we also have parent information sessions where we lead sessions on how to support math instruction at home. We have a reading instruction meeting in March. We also partner with Screenedge as a company that has these really educational videos on um students dealing with social media, students dealing with stress, bullying. New film is coming out this month on vaping and drugs, which will want, part of it was filmed in this Kennedy classroom. And it comes out, uh, no students in it, but uh, from a Kennedy classroom, because they, they are, they're a local company. Uh, it comes out in March, which we'll be sharing with our community. Once again, all these videos are not just shown to our families, they are aligned with lessons that we have our teachers doing classes. Let's go. Can we see that, Miss Alden, awesome, I'm center corner.
Good evening, I'm Liz Calderon Garcia, I'm the community school coordinator at Kennedy. So here we have some of our programs that we have um in partnerships at the school site. I won't go through all of them, we've mentioned them throughout our presentation. Um, but I do want to highlight, we did include our dashboards, so this year. Um, we are taking data each trimester to see what services are being accessed at our family center and who's accessing them. To make sure that we are reflecting on the data and seeing what other gaps do we have so that we can bring in more partnerships. And then what's going really well, we want to capture what's going well and continue and grow those programs. So I've included our dashboard, within our dashboard, you'll also find surveys. So we are surveying families that are received, that are coming to receive services at the family center. Um, and we have two different surveys, so we have a family center survey for those families that just come and get different services. How is the service, do you feel like you have a plan? For us is really important, not just to connect them with services, but to make sure that they know and they have a plan, what are the next steps? Um, and we're there to guide them through the whole process. Then we also have a survey for newcomer families, so we are, um, we also do newcomer interviews there at Kennedy, um, it started at Kennedy actually. And so we also get data from our families about how it went, what else would they like to see? We really take to heart the comments and the feedback we get from families on how we can better improve um the services or the communication. Or any of the partnerships that we do have going on at Kennedy. Um, our goal is to bridge home and school communication. Um, and so I work really closely with our admin team and our school staff to make sure that we're doing that along also with our families and students.
So, so just in closing, we had made some things that we think that would help us going forward, I'm gonna highlight uh three of them. Uh, we have three classes for zero period math with school could fund two, we'd love if we could fund a total of five. Um, that, an extra class, we have the teachers interested. Uh, one, uh, a reading specialist, which Kennedy in my experience has not had, and I've never had one either at McKinley to support this year with sixth grade. They entered sixth grade in September based on I ready, a hundred thirty-two students, uh, fifty percent of our sixth grade were two or more grade levels below in reading. And the last one, which we've, and once again, all this, I've seen, we've received quite a bit of support from the district, but this is, we're, as we're planning ahead. Um, lack of substitute teachers as exponentially affects middle school, because substitutes have a choice and they will choose, choose a smaller grades and sort of the older grades. We love to teach and it just, it takes away from our ability to be instructional leaders, which is our favorite part of this position. Uh, there's been a lot of support uh from January on, uh, uh, but just, it is. Uh, there's been a lot of support, uh, from January on, uh, uh, but just, it is one of the things that affects our day to day ability to be the instruction leaders that we. We all three want to be. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You guys want to go ahead?
I love hearing about Kennedy. I mean, I just, you know, I'm just happy you're removed, but, um, as, as a parent. Um, and of course I'm, I'm super thrilled to be still involved, uh, in a, a different role, but, um. It, it was just, it was great to hear it. I loved seeing the pictures. Um. I'm looking forward to the musical next weekend. Um, definitely going with my fresh, high school freshman. Um, appreciated seeing last year's musical. It brought back a lot of memories for me too. So I, I enjoyed that. Um, I, I, there are a couple of things that, uh. Let's, let's just jump to the, uh, emerging bilingual learners. Um, fifty-two percent improvement, right? Uh, across from the population, according to the, the data that's in there that went up one, one or two, uh, levels in there. That, that's remarkable. Like that is really good progress. So it's clear that the strategies that you're taking there are positive and hopefully we can keep, you know. Fueling those and putting it in and, and on the flip side, like less than five percent, um, actually de, went down a level. Um. That was a great graph. I, I really, I really like seeing that growth is amazing. Um, and it's good to see there. And then thinking of the growth. Um, there are a lot of, I mean, you all sprinkled throughout your presentation, some amazing things. So. I don't know what makes me anchor on one or the other, uh, but you know, you talked about how, um. You know, attendance rewards for very good attendance and shifting the mindset to, hey, let's see if we weren't improved in attendance and, and that's. I love it. I just think that those are, those are great strategies that we're pulling in there. The other thing that kind of stuck out to me is that. Um, what makes Kennedy really unique in my mind is that it's like, you know, it's like, uh. Pre-high school, right? In terms of the scheduling and putting it in there multiple times through there. It's like something we never hear from other sites. They, they, but they have to deal with schedules at the same way, but like, nobody really has to put together sort of a master schedule the same way that, um, probably. Uh, a Kennedy does versus our, our other schools. MIT probably has a similar thing, but maybe at a little bit of a smaller scale. And I just loved how that slid through of like, we're thinking like this master schedule all the time. How do we get these kids to have two touchpoints with their teachers? So that they can put that in or make sure that they're grouped together with the right kind of yell's like, uh, that's the unique, um, sorry, emerging bilingual learners like in their same, same group. Um, you know, that's a, that's an interesting challenge that you all have to take on. Um, and you know, I just wanted to call that out, the surfacing turf. Yeah.
And I, I would say it's the balancing of the student choice and the joy with, with what we find to be the instructional model. So we allow students to. And when we say scheduling, it is a month-long process. It's not a week. It's something we do. It is a month-long. Students make requests. We want to accommodate these requests. If, if they make the request, we want to accommodate it as we think about the instructional focus of school. And that is, it is all three of us. We're, you know, throwing ideas and trying to accommodate the student needs.
Because we know the kids so well, like for example, seventeen, eight, we, we could be like, oh, maybe these three shouldn't be in this class. Because you're trying to be proactive into that because we know, we know the teachers too, like, oh, you know, we want to make sure that it's a good team fit.
Yeah.
It is, it is, it's quite a process. It's fun. Um.
Well, I say.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And also, I mean, electives, and then they're going to have different interests and different electives that they want to be able to do. And you have to work that around to the master schedule. I, I. Seems like a challenge. Um, uh, the last one I'll call out is love to switch to the inclusive classrooms. Um, for RSP students, just hearing that, getting them into the classroom, getting, um, getting the support pushed in and helping them there, um, and that kind of shift. Uh, for, not a, not every student is going to, um, thrive in that environment, but being able to go back and say, identify the ones that can and, and making that shift. So I'm really, really glad to hear that work for, um, you know, the inclusive classrooms and education there. So. Um, lots of good things going on, um, lots of focus on growth. Uh, you know, looking forward to, you know, as you said, in the next year and the year after. Like really seeing those numbers hit that are, you know, further to the targets. Um, we know these, we know that the students that are going there. Just like the students that are going to MIT have tons of potential. Let's go unlock it and make sure that they have every opportunity to, uh, reach their goals.
Thank you so much for you, the staff, teachers, for all the work that you do for the kids and thank you for the presentation. Um, like Mike, I was really impressed by the really nice, uh, LPAC data there and my. Hope is that I, I think there's some of the strongest numbers in the, in, in the district that if you could. Package a little bit of that magic, like what did you do? And, and share that with the other school sites because, uh, this district needs a lot of, uh, help there. And so sharing our findings across schools is, I think it'd be really powerful. So Bravo for that. And I'd like to see that infect some of the other schools as well. So. Um, on suspension, something that I didn't hear in the presentation, sorry if I just missed it, was that, um. What, what I've seen successful in a bunch of the other schools was a restorative justice approach, you leveraging NUA. And I, I didn't see that called out in the presentation. That seems to have been a component of, uh, effective, uh, suspension reduction in other schools. So I, I'll give you a chance to respond. I, I don't know if that's something that this school is best.
We use those strategies within the school, but not in the form, not in the formal format. So we're using sort of justice. We, we tried to, uh, take an issue and then use. Uh, solutions like El Centro is a, not a consequence. It is a class to support students who may have drug issues. Uh, today, Mr. Coming in, I was working with a student who may have said something they should have said, and he was giving him a lesson to work on that restorative practice. So it is something that we're doing every day, uh, with constant communication. But yes, uh, you're, you're a great question.
We do have mediation. I guess they have certain conflict. We do mediation, other students, um. I don't have that. We have, if. If there is a suspension, we do have a reentry meeting with, with the student and, and parents. To make sure it doesn't happen again, or at least try not to have it again. Um, I want to say ninety percent of those conversations have been successful. I don't believe we've suspended the same person twice. But, um, but yeah, a lot of that seems to be, we, we tend to do that, um. Before we, we have to. It happens to be like the last people. So we were trying all these different, we, we do sit down with folks and we have this conflict. We try to make sure that we, but we try as soon as we get a bully report or anything of that sort, we, we get to it so that it doesn't escalate.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, I'm, I'm a little curious what's going on with the Makerspace. There's sort of a call out here. It's been under construction for three years.
I've not, yeah, yep, that's an accurate statement. There's different, there's different, there's different issues coming up. There's like, they, they didn't get the right. Um, exhausted. It is this, one issue keeps popping up for them. I would love to have it open for next year.
Okay. Is, is there like an after action report we should do on the district level? Like what did we F up that like it's three years to open the Makerspace said?
I wasn't there when it was first started. I just know that I was supposed to be start open this August. It's not open this August.
Very frustrating. Thank you for continuing to harp on that until that thing's open. So.
One of our famous one.
Yeah, that'd be great to have. Um, and it'd be great to see if we can get you that reading specialist too. So we'll see. All right. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, it's pretty clear that you have a, an amazing team, leadership team at Kennedy. And, um, I continue to hear great things from parents and, uh, family members and students. Um, so thank you all for the presentation. Really appreciated you all being here and for all the hard work you're doing. Um, there's so much I could say that I really, um, appreciated with the presentation and just what I know about Kennedy. Um, so a couple of things I, I wanted to call out, but actually before I do that, um, I did want to ask. About the reading specialist, if you were to get the reading specialist, what's your vision? Is that a pull in, push out as an elective?
It's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a good align with our expository wheel. So they're going to have English class with everyone, but they would be pulled for this. Right now, expository ELD are classes that all our students receive. And this would be a reading spec, expository reading, reading specialist ELD. So they're not missing anything. It's just going to be in lieu of something, someone expert at this field to support.
Okay, great. So like, uh, okay.
Yeah, so.
We would pull data for that. We would definitely look like, like what I mentioned.
Right. Who needs it and.
Their schedule, but then we look at who are candidates and then we look at, and then we place them in there so that.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Um. Yeah. So, so I appreciate that. So, uh. Yeah. So I did want to just say, you know, similar to what I said about MIT, you know, certainly Nick, I know. I've, uh, watched you at, uh, MIT and now Kennedy, you know, you really believe in student voice and it's clear that all of you do. Uh, and how important is that for our middle schoolers? And I loved hearing about the student collaboration, the goal setting. Uh, again, um, kind of acknowledging the positive behaviors, which kind of goes what you said, like you may not have a, a formal restorative justice. Um, program, but it sounds like you're, you're doing that. It's pretty clear that you're, that you all know your students. And we know that data says that that makes a difference, right? If students feel like. You know their name, you know who they are, you know what they want. Yeah, go ahead.
I want to say something because some of that we, as a team that we talked about, we have a, every school we have our tier three students. We have a tier three student that is very challenging in eighth grade. And our eighth grade team has taken on to give the student continuous positive feedback through it. And there's reasons maybe not to get positive, but they have continually given positive feedback and it has shown in his behavior, in. It is shown in his progress at the school. And his progress metrics are a little different than maybe other students, but it is, this team of teachers has taken that on and that. That came from them and it, it was just, so that's an example of something that, and, and these tier three students are the students that. That may not be reached by our tier one strategies and, and these, but these are the students that may need the, have the most need within the school. Right. So, so just, that's an example of something that every school can do, but it's a commitment made by, that's, we have to lead it, but it's a commitment made by adults. And we have many teachers making that commitment. So just shout out to them.
Yeah, it's pretty clear from, you know, all the various programs you have and the effort you're making to know the students that. You're not letting them fall through the cracks, right? Like there's sort of this unknown. Kid at the school who doesn't have the caring adult that they need to make sure they're going to be successful. So thanks for doing that. And then it kind of goes in line with what you were saying with the, pretty impressive with the, um. The special ed students and really getting them into the general ed class, classes. Again, we know that the data is really good on that. That they're going to be more successful if they're able to be with their, uh, peers. So, so thanks for doing that. Um, oh, and I just, you know, I, I love, uh, one of the things I love about Kennedy is it really is our full service middle school. So just thank you for all the things you're doing. I mean, that you had on the various slides, all the various events. And I, I love performing arts and music and I know that that's how we engage our students and we build community. So, so thanks for that. And I'm glad you got to go to your first one.
It was great.
Person.
My, my kids didn't like it. They were like, why is it so loud? There were four, so this.
Um, oh, and then the other thing I just want to say is I really appreciate the way you engage your parents, you know, with the parent tours. I know you did that at MIT as well, and I really appreciate you bringing that to Kennedy. Um, and like you said, I mean, get the parents in the classroom so they can see what's going on and help support their kids better. So anyway, thank you to all four of you. And also, um, I think we have some of the teachers here, uh, dialing in on Zoom. And I just want to give a shout out to all the teachers and staff at Kennedy. You guys work really hard. So thanks.
Well, great. Um, again, thank you for the presentation. And again, what can I say? I don't want to be biased, but Kennedy holds a very special place in my heart as well. I have now three kids that gone through Kennedy. So I really appreciate it. Um, Nick, since the time I first met you, when I first came to the board, your enthusiasm. Was just awesome. I think you guys are the best trio to the administrator, of course, Liz. I appreciate your assistance and the. Family center. Um, I do want to say that, just like Alisa mentioned. We do have to keep in mind that you guys are a really big middle school. You guys are dealing with lots of. Sixth, seventh and eighth graders. And so obviously that says a lot, even when we talk about suspension, which again, you guys are doing. A tremendous job, job, uh, working with strategies. Um. Let's see, um, I do appreciate going to the reclassification piece, um. Mr. Camarena, your perspective with how to, um. Let me see, cause I can barely read my own writing. Um. What did he said? Appreciate the thinking to get the newcomers up to speed. Um, and then obviously your perspective, the perspective as to. How you learn your other languages in college and you're bringing that back to, uh, the middle school. Um, chronic absenteeism, again, that's going to be something that we are all working as a school district and hopefully things will get better. Um, I think you guys, all three of you have awesome personalities. Um, I did get to experience, of course, as a parent. Especially when we went into, uh, lockdown. Um, I appreciated being there, even though I was working on my own computer. My son was right next to me. And so I was able to see both. Actually, the three of you, Mr. Camarena and, um, Ms. Leon, Leonardo, your daily, what do you guys call them? Announcements. And so that was great. Uh, you know, I was there listening and so I appreciate Liz's, uh, text and calls. To all our parents regarding food distribution. Um, I appreciate as a parent and, you know. Getting the emails, the texts to remind our students to charge our Chromebooks. I know that's very important. So. Again, I appreciate that as a parent and I, to me, communications is very important. Um, let's see what else. I think that is it. Um, obviously I think you guys are doing a tremendous job. Um, keep it up and great job again on the presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great team, great team. I want to ask you a couple of questions. So. We did these instructional rounds a few years back, a few years back. So. So in doing the instructional rounds, are all four of you going together? Or are you using some of your teachers to go with you in to view? Other classrooms to see the strategies, techniques, the engagement that's going on.
So this, the, this first round was about admin getting on the same page. So we're seeing the same thing. So we're can coach properly. So it's a lot of, uh, this is that. Walk through as an admin team. We have had teachers observe each other, some of our newer teachers. But this was a new model for this school. I've done it before at McKinley, but I'm sort of bringing it here now. So it's sort of get that comfort before we have a teacher coming to observe another teacher. They have this building that comfort and trust. So this round was admin led. Let us align. So it was two of us or one of us, depending. Some of us are covering. So, uh, but yes, that is, so yeah, so I, it's instructional rounds, admin led. This round was admin led, but it is something that can grow to having teachers doing it as well.
Good for you. And it's something that we should, you know, as you progress and continue doing this. Be very interesting to see. What your changes have been because of this and then to share it with the other principals. We started this years ago where, if you recall, you were with us at the time, I think you, I, the one wasn't with, this was, uh, David at the time. When we were doing instructional rounds and we would meet at a school site. As administrators and we'd give the teachers plenty of warning before we were coming. Um, and teach and the principal would prep them as you know, and we would go into different classrooms and then we would. Leave the classroom and we would, what we saw, what we didn't see and what we needed to see. So thanks for bringing that back, Nick.
Pretty good. We, every, every bulletin when that's, it's there. Don't be coming in, my teachers know. Those are reading, retired, you know, and they, they know that. And then we do the, the feedback and then we send out the new data.
Great, great. That's good.
Bulletin's our weekly communication to our staff. So it's perfect. And the other thing you, you created your own, uh, you're creating the own Kennedy, your own Kennedy platinum ticket. Which is when the early process of it, we had, uh, we worked together on setting on a, a survey with our staff. We sent it out and we got some data on like, are we doing this? Are we doing this? Are we doing this? And that's going to lead to, this is what we're doing as a school. English department's going to meet how we close reading as a school. We're going to work with them. And, uh, and what's I said earlier, it's going to be collaborative. How can, what strategies are working for our teams? And then then we could filter it out from there. That's the plan.
I would say it's more aligned with MTSS. So we looked at what tier one instruction, what are the best practices for tier one instruction? And created a Google form survey and got feedback from teachers to figure out where are we and then going forward, we'd use that to make sure. We're all aligned. Everybody has a word wall objectives, greeting students at the door, whatever those best practices are for tier one. That we don't want to just see it in a few classes. We want to see it in all of our classes to make sure that we are on top of it for our tier one.
Instruction. During one of our staff meetings, we had a jab board and we took it from. I think it's where we have, sure, comment like, what are they doing? Sharing strategies at the same time, what can we do to make things better? So if we have that data there, um. You know, ideas and things that they're sharing with, with us so that as we think about this, we, we keep all that in mind.
So many of you are probably not, Elise is probably the only one that was here. Um, my first year when we, um, worked on instructional rounds. And we also, we had a person. Who was at Stanford, but now has her own, um, her own company. And she led us through what a platinum tick, which you should. We would look for in classrooms and she is, and I met her at the last, um, superintendent's conference. And she has taken it to the same level that you're doing it now, Chandra, using the MTSS model. So I'm glad to hear you're doing that. We have to pay for her to come. But, uh, because it was what, was it a year long? You know, Kathy Kwan paid for it for us, for us to have the.
But the value was we got to observe other schools and the schools and, 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 and I, I always say this profession is where we take ideas from each other. So that was the value.
Why reinvent the wheel, right? Um, so there was that. And then the other thing, uh, Liz, thank you so much for starting out. I remember when you started that newcomer center meeting with the parents, uh, and now look, it's gone on to MIT. So thanks for, you know, being the pioneer in doing that because our newcomers, as they come to this country. You know, they're, they're lost. And our system is so different, as you well know, um, and parents are, are struggling, but need just the assistance. Of how to. And our system is so different, as you well know, um, and parents are are struggling, but need just the assistance of how to move forward. And by you starting that that program, I think with Michelle Ramon, I think she was.
Yes.
Yeah, and and I'm sorry.
Yes, then we just went to.
Yeah, I know you did and and you and if I'm not mistaken, you guys presented at the conference, right? Congratulations to both of you. I saw some pictures that Naomi sent me uh of presentation and you guys presenting. Um, so. But I haven't uh touched basically either with you or with Michelle yet about. Oh, that's right. Elsa was there too. Elsa was there from town. So you know, it's getting around to what you know, Redwood City is doing again. And then the dashboard, I didn't know there was a dashboard that you had created.
I just created a data collection where we're looking at different um who is getting the services.
Right.
Who's coming to students are something like our counseling after school program, I mean, everyone. And I go over the data with all our different partners. And also with our staff just to figure out what do we need to bring to Kennedy, which went really well. Um, and then we have to survey them. So just kind of like presenting what is the family center doing? Because we've never done that. We talk about what we do, but we've never put numbers to it. So now we're doing that and presenting that to our staff and partners.
It's linked on the uh the slide and it's right up there.
Okay. Yeah, it's funny, the 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 color of the font. I didn't see it until just the board meeting. I I missed it. So I. I did want to give you a shout out for that. So thank you very much. It's really useful to see the data. And then, like you said, you can. Use it to move forward. Yeah, I did, yeah.
And the outstanding survey results too, from the people getting the services are really satisfied.
Right, right.
Next question is, have you, I'm sure Michelle's seen it. Have you shared it with the other community school coordinators? This, what uh what she has created at at Kennedy regarding this dashboard.
We haven't shared the dashboard. We are creating um data and plans. For each of our sites and then bringing it, then bringing it together as a community school for our whole department.
Okay, just share it. She's a, I just thought it's a great idea. It's a great idea. Yeah, yeah. So perfect. Well, thank you, all four of you for everything you do. It is a large, comprehensive middle school. And Nick will, the other thing that I I want to point out, you are correct. All teachers need to be teaching reading.
Yeah, I know. It's not going to go up with one.
So thank you so much for acknowledging that because we all.
That was nice. I forgot about you. So during a walk through with parents, we walked into our music class and it was part of our initiatives and our music teacher was teaching informational writing, a musical article in the class. So so the parent was there goes why they're doing that. I'm like, because this is one of our initiatives.
Right.
So that was.
That was kudos to you guys. Thank you so much. Good night.
Thank you.
Bye.
Still under discussion items, uh, twelve point one. Discussion of recommendation of mathematic curriculum adoption grades K five for the twenty twenty three, twenty four school year.
Ms. Wolf.
I have some slides. And these were, I want to thank Kendall Klein for putting these together. It's just a brief overview. You had the information about the process in the. In the board item. And so we just brought to you the voice of the teachers who have been involved in the pilot. And why they chose illustrative math. And we were hoping to have a couple of of the. Pieces to put out here tonight, but they're arriving tomorrow. And so we will be having them on display here in the board room. But this is what they look like. Um, but these were, as you know, in the pilot, they piloted more than one. Um, curriculum. And so this was the last curriculum that they piloted and that. These were the math behaviors that they observed in their students, which are part of the math standards in the Common Core standards. And so these were. The elements that they felt were more present um with the students participating in in this particular curriculum than in the others that they tried out. All of which is super important to develop math thinkers and math, um, successful math students. And grades K through five. And these were pieces of information about what the teachers felt. Um, helped to make illustrated math stand out over the other components that they tried. The other two curriculum materials, and I don't want to read these to you. You can see these. No, you've just had too long presentations. So I'm going pretty quickly. And the teachers then crafted this message for you um to take a look at in terms of their commitment to this. Um, particular set of materials. Um, and so they worked together to collaboratively to craft this message. To show their support for illustrative mathematics. And our next steps then are to invite the publisher to come and do an overview of the curriculum if it's adopted. Um, by you, um, that the. Teachers would have the chance to see it before um in a month at the end of April before they go home for the summer. Our plan is to do um. Training for the materials in August when the teachers relearn and then ongoing part of our commitment, of course, to the. Good implementation of the new curriculum is helping the teachers understand how to use it. And they have opportunities to try some things out and then come back together, work with their with the trainer um and then move forward with their implementation. And so again, that the this is just a quick overview of of the information that is also highlighted in the board item. So if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I'm. Think that um it would be important to give you the chance to take a look at the materials when they're here and then we can. If if you'd like to have this opportunity, we could schedule the time to actually go through it and and take a look at and explain it to you. Because I think when you see it, you'll see that it it's set out in such a way that it's very supportive of the teachers. Um, and to be able to really do the small group instruction with their students. One of the things uh that's expensive, which I know that you saw, and we've already had that um. Some negotiation back and forth with the um provider of the materials since this went uh since the board item went into four docs. And we brought the price down a little bit. Um, but the components are materials for the teachers to use with small groups. In addition to the larger group instruction. And so it's a really a uh complete program in terms of meeting needs of differentiated levels of students in the throughout the classroom.
So I I did a little bit of independent research on just like how well acclaimed this particular suggested curriculum was and the answer was very. Um, so I did, I I was pleased that it passed a sniff test. You add add reports, I curate, you know, all gave it extremely high ratings, which was which was great. I, when I did a site visit with Garfield, I think they mentioned that there they were doing a pilot with Engage New York. Math, and then I didn't see that mentioned here as one of the pilots that was.
It was. I think it's called something else.
Oh, okay, got renamed, which explains. All right. Um, yeah, because I I'd looked into that curriculum and was a little bit less impressed on that front. So I I'm. Again, and and not as the educator in the room or anything, but just like trying to do my diligence, sniff testing, where does consensus be? Uh, does it that the illustrative mathematics seems like it's very well supported. So I'm 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 happy to see that outcome apparently landing here.
Yeah, I didn't have any questions. I mean, I trust the judgment of the the teachers involved, and I did want to give a shout out to the to the teachers who um. Basically spent the extra time to to really delve into this and make the recommendation. So, yeah, I appreciate all of this. It is. As we know, it's a big hit to our budget. So we want to make sure that it's good curriculum and we know that our math scores are not where we want them to be. So. Um, hopefully this will help us. And I particularly like that. One of the things that's called out is that it should be supportive of the teachers being able to teach the math. And engaging for the students. So um, thank you. Yeah.
And this is a big deal. Yeah.
It is a big, no, the adoptions don't happen every day.
Right.
They're a big deal.
What is, what is a K to eight district need to do? Well, you need to be able to read, write, need to be able to do math. And there's a bunch of other stuff too, but those are the, those are the big ones, right? And I feel like we have some approaches that are beginning to bear fruit on the on the English side. So like, I I feel like directionally, things are okay there. And I don't feel like directionally, we've been in the right place with math, like just if we keep on keeping on, like we'll get in the right place. And so something like this uh gives me some amount of hope that this is a new curriculum and it seems widely acclaimed. That there's a real chance we could start moving the needle for our kids on math and like, that's great. So, sorry.
Yeah, it is exciting. Um, I, you know, I think it's it's great to be looking at that and reading, writing and math. Um, and I want to thank Kendall in advance for having answered my question about like, please, you know, help me understand some of the differentiated strategies. You said. Very thorough answer and list there, but like language routines are built into this curriculum to be able to help people acquire not just math, but language at the same time. Got a lot of the same thing that uh Nick was talking about. Love all the teachers have to teach that. So that was neat. It's designed for universal design for learning, so an inclusive environment um and that uh, you know, that sort of um. Instructional strategies that, you know, we would expect from a modern curriculum, but of course you want to know that it's in there um and put it in. So. Awesome. I appreciate the pilot team, um, you know, and everybody that's worked on it, Kendall, Liz and the Ed Services Department for guiding us, guiding them through the process. It looks like it'll be exciting. I'm looking forward to the materials.
And then, of course, not to be redundant, but yes, uh, definitely. Thank you to the team. Um, I'm really excited and, you know, keeping our fingers crossed that this. Uh, will work and it would be beneficial for all the Redwood City school kids. Thank you.
So it will be on public display for a month and then we will bring the recommendation back to you in terms of adoption. So thank you.
Get Rick and have Rick. Have Rick go in there for with you.
And so it's nine oh two. Do we want to take a five minute break before moving on with the agenda? Or do you guys want to?
I guess it's a go pretty quick.
I'm ready. I'm just saying twenty minutes max, I would think.
It depends. So the longest items would be the action items, I guess, around fifteen minutes for that and the board and superintendent reports, which I. Guess around ten minutes, so about twenty five minutes plus the other items that go pretty quickly.
We can go ahead and move on then.
Okay.
Great. With that said, um, item thirteen consent agenda items. Can I please get a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Action items fourteen point one recommendation regarding adoption of resolution number twenty six to submit continue funding application. CFA for the twenty three, twenty four school year for child development centers.
This is something that is done every year. It's done every year and also gives uh Edna. Our our director, the ability to sign off on items. So it's something that you've seen before, or maybe not, not not David, but the other three of you have.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fourteen point two recommendation regarding second reading and approval of board policy. Five, one, one, three absences and excuses and adoption of resolution number twenty seven.
So you've seen this board policy before, but there is a resolution attached to it. So thus, it's an action item? Yes, I'm available for questions if need be.
No questions.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fourteen point three recommendation regarding adoption of resolution twenty eight reduction or elimination of certificated. Services for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three.
So this particular action item and the next one all um pertain to this moment in time. By March fifteenth, there are various notifications that need to be given to staff when we believe there might be lack of work or lack of funds. And many of these items, it it tends to be a timeliness issue regarding measure U. Uh, PTO, other grants, other site funds, not being able to make a commitment at this moment in time. Those decisions tend to work themselves out in late March, April and so forth with site council decisions. And so. Uh, we've provided information about the various positions in in this particular item and the next one as well.
And I just wanted to say thank you to you and Aaron for putting together that description. It was really helpful. It was really detailed for each role about the current status and and then the reason for the reduction or elimination. Yeah, it was great to have that in advance.
Yeah, and I think some of the classified positions were a result of, uh, you know, those were COVID money. Positions, right? And so they were meant to sort of be for a certain period of time and then go away. So. Um, well, I'll make a motion to approve fourteen point three, which is the certificated services. Resolution twenty eight.
All right, I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, fourteen point two recommendation regarding adoption of resolution twenty nine. Reduction of certain classified services for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three.
So thank you to Alisa. You said my words, which is great that uh there were adjustments made because of COVID funds. But also the ability to reduce or adjust hours of classified staff are part of the work within uh this particular item. So. This is the time of year in which we need to uh. Decide what we expect for next year. We are able to add hours with um over the next few months as we build it into the June budget. But the moment to consider reductions occurs right now. So once again, the same reasons as the previous item.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fourteen point five recommendation regarding adoption of resolution thirty, resolution. Of the Board of Trustees of the Redwood City School District, appointing Measure T Citizens Oversight Committee to oversee Measure S.
Uh, good evening, members of the board. Uh, as we all know, there is a citizens bond oversight committee that was formed with the passage of. Measure T in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, with the recent passage of measure S in November of twenty twenty two. Uh, we again find our uh need to appoint a CBOC to oversee the expenditure of those funds. Uh, knowing how hard it is to find members for our current measure T CBOC. Uh, we are bringing a resolution to uh. Allow the uh major T. CBOC to continue on as the major S CBOC upon the completion. Uh, of the spending of measure T funds and between now and then they will work. Uh, as one unit reviewing expenditures of both bonds once proceeds from measure S are sold uh later this spring.
Yeah, I just want to say I think this makes a lot of sense and I do see some of our um current CBOC. Members on the call. So thank you for being here at the meeting tonight and thank you for all your work um as a community member, helping with the oversight. So, yeah, I didn't have any questions or concerns. I think this makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I agree. I think it makes a lot of sense. And I know that one of the agenda items that are coming upcoming um CBOC meeting is going to be around. You know, wh- what's the role and responsibility of the CBOC members? Well, there'll be some training in there. Um, and that will kind of talk about the the multiple layers of oversight that are added into the whole bond expenditure process. Um, I do think it would be nice to get like, uh, you know, just a mini refresher for the board as well and for the public that's here to be able to hear those items at some point. In a, in a, in a future meeting, um, just to remind like, what is the, um, you know, what is the bond team do? What is the board? What's the board's responsibility, the auditor and the CBOC? But I do definitely think that um transitioning the measure T to the measure S uh oversight committee makes a lot of sense. Um, I'll I'll move to approve as well.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen, board and superintendent reports.
No, I think there's fourteen point six.
Oh. Sorry about that. I guess that's why I turn the page. I apologize. So fourteen point six. Recommendation regarding discussion and approval of Prop twenty eight funds for the twenty three, twenty four school year.
Go ahead. Yes.
So I don't have slides for this. So I don't have slides for this one, but I just, um, want to say most of the information once again is here in the board item. And so this is a result of Prop twenty-eight that was passed in November that, um, what is an allocation for each site to add staff to provide more instruction to the students in the arts and, and to build on the existing programs in the school, uh, in the district and to have input from each principal as to how the money is spent. So in meeting with each principal and I'm looking at the allocation per site, um, these, what you see here are the decisions made by the principals as to how to allocate their funding in regards to either adding to the music program that exists in the site or adding to the steam program that also exists, um, across the district. Um, there are a couple of school sites that we added additional funding to because they are priority sites in order to be able to round out the numbers. Um, and so the LCAP funding will be used to do this, but, um, in some cases, the sites are adding additional funding to be able to have a, a full-time person or they already have a half-time person at their site that will be, be making a full-time person. So all of that will be sorted out. Um, we'll be flying the positions in the next couple of days. The, the job descriptions are ready to go. And so once this is approved by you, um, we will send this out and then be meeting with each school side. Um, when it comes time for the interviews and the actual, um, placement of the people. Again, some of these are positions that already exist as half-time people at the school sites. And so they will be becoming full-time people. Um, and most of these sites also have in some cases unused steam labs that the teachers will be able to use. And so what our plan is, Rick, is to use the funding that comes from another grant that we received earlier in the year, the arts, music and instructional materials grant to purchase the materials for the seam center and the maker space that will be developed now at the school size as well as to add additional musical instruments to the schools. So we think with, together with these two funding sources, we'll have a more robust music and steam program across the district.
Yeah. Can I just add to that? Just real quick. I think it's important, uh, to know that all of these positions that, uh, Liz was talking about are new positions. So this is to supplement. We're not paying for existing positions. So if it was a point five, we're adding a point five. We're not paying for the one point O out of the prop twenty-eight funds. And I think that's very important to recognize. Uh, that we're doing this to enhance the services and programs at the school sites. And to lose this point with the art, music and instructional materials block grant. Uh, some of the delay in implementing that was based on the concern over what would happen with Prop twenty-eight uh, and the amount of money that would come from that, because if we instituted some of those programs immediately with those funds, we couldn't pay for them with Prop twenty-eight funds. So we waited so we could use that money more.
Yeah.
Uh, effectively, uh, in conjunction with this money that had to go to new programs or new positions, right? When and eighty percent of it to new positions, right? So that's what we focused on, uh, when we were, uh, trying to go down this path throughout the course of the year when the governor's budget proposal came, uh, as well as the passage of Prop twenty-eight in November.
I just want to say it's so exciting because, you know, I feel like, I don't know, ten years ago, we started talking about, we wanted steam teachers and maker spaces and, you know, then we got the measure T funding. So we were able to create those at our school sites where we didn't have them. And then we really needed the staff, right? And we needed the money to pay for it. So this is just so exciting to see that we're actually going to have steam at every school site, right? And then music at every school site. I mean, we had bits and pieces of it at every school site, but just not enough. So this is great. Yeah. Thank you for all your thinking about that and also planning ahead. So we can fund it all.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, it is exciting and we were well aware of the supplement, not supplant. And so I'm glad to hear how that kind of worked out there. Uh, the only question that I, that I'd asked, and I'm just going to share the answer because Liz already answered it for me was that, you know, the funding, the funding formula is seventy percent based on enrollment and thirty percent based on low income. And I was wondering like, do we have to follow that for, that's how the district gets funded, but is, do we have to do that for sites? Can we concentrate the money towards uh, priority sites that may have a greater need for, uh, additional services there? Um, and my understanding is no, uh, it's, uh, we have to follow the way it's put in there, but, but I wanted to at least remind us to be asking those questions when we see these funding sources. Are we prioritizing the right way? Are we following our equitable approach to be able to get there? And there's equity built into this funding formula as well, but we can always do, we're to break the barriers. We always have to think of what next we can do. So maybe next one, but, uh, we're excited about this funding.
Yeah. And of course I think, um, it would obviously have the students even be more engaged, you know, because you learn by doing music and having, you know, steam. And so I do feel that it's, I, I actually a really good thing. So I'm really excited.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Okay. So now we're on to board and superintendent's report. Who would like to go first?
Had my first LCAP meeting.
And did you have fun?
Yee-haw.
Uh, let's see, I, um, actually Cecilia, John and I all attended the Samatao County School Boards Association meeting, which focused on equity. And we heard from the Campbell Union School District about what they've been doing there. And then we had some pretty good table conversations and we were all together with the Samatao County Office of Ed. So that was kind of nice that we were able to talk about what all we were doing and how they can support us. And then I also went to a Safe Routes to Schools meeting today. Um, there is a lot going on and I was thinking at some point it might be good to have uh, kind of an update. We're going to get an update at the Redwood City Together meeting because I also met with Raphael today about planning our next meeting, which is next week. So depending upon we get there, maybe we can, if it's a slide deck or something, we can just share it with all of you. So you all can see, um, what else going on. The one thing that, uh, was shared is there's five hundred and twenty-six youth passes, those bus passes that have gone out, which they were estimating, if I understood what she said, like a hundred thousand school trips saved if you were doing individual cars, not to say that all those people would do that, but if you think about getting the traffic off the street and the emissions saved, it's kind of cool. Um, and of course just getting kids to school. And then they continue to do bike rodeos at different school sites. Um, and there's going to be a, a walk and roll day that we have annually every year. That's May third, in case you're interested and want to go out and help out at school sites. That's it.
Well, I was at the LCAP meeting too. I love LCAP meetings. Honestly, I, I really do. I mean, it's, it's an equity document. We're reminded that as it begins and, you know, the students groups, uh, we look at them per site. Um, I joined the goal to breakout, which was awesome. Um, you know, our three goals, uh, you know, and we looked at data and question trends and it was good. Just, just so you all know, the LCAP will be coming, there's three more meetings, uh, and then it comes here June twenty-first, uh, for discussion. And then following that for approval. Um, bond team also met, um, this was, uh, I ran over the budget, um, looked at, learned about the state school facilities program update. Um, so there's exciting things. I think there's going to be a meeting scheduled in the future where the team will actually come in and present the same information here. Um, I was at Adelante Selby on Monday for NUA training. I got to see Robert Price modeling in the classroom for two classrooms. Uh, it was amazing. Um, and you know, Warren was there, Patti, uh, Whitney, um, they all walked around. There was an SSC parent that was observing as well. Um, the kids are absolutely amazing. Um, they just, they partner and pair and then they fishbowl and then they go back and partner and pair and talk to each other. Um, and one thing that was really, really interesting was that in the first classroom that I saw, um, the kids have been primed on the material the week before, sort of following, I'm going to call it traditional methods. I don't know what they were, but it wasn't NUA kind of strategies working on it. Um, and so when Robert came in, he was expecting to move into the kind of the processing side. And they hadn't really retained it. I mean, this was Monday morning, right? Like that, they read it last week. It could have been something else. But when you went into the ones where the kids were at the priming stage, they were first time engaging with it and, you know, he dove right into the collaborative conversations and they're talking to each other. It's just boom, they went right into it and you could just feel, um, you know, the, the, uh, how they were attaining that material. So that was, it was just a lot of fun. Um, yesterday swung by Roosevelt to help judge their reading fair. Yeah, that was a lot of fun. They put up boards about it, all that kind of stuff. Um, a former trustee was there as well judging. And yeah, so it was nice to see.
And it sent me photos. He's like, where's my partner? Cause I always partnered, but I couldn't be there.
And then I attended the, um, Ed Committee, the, um, Chambers Ed Committee meeting. Yeah. And this time I took detailed notes. Um, so if anybody has questions, I'm happy to share.
I was, I was gonna be, yeah, yeah.
Send him to, send him to John and then John, or you can send him to us as long as we don't interact.
Yeah, I, I continue the notes. Uh, the things that were covered. There wasn't, it was a lot of, it was just kind of updates, not really actions that were happening in there. Um, we did miss the Redwood City School District update, but it was also done in forty-five minutes. So I don't know. It was kind of so wanted to share, but.
Yeah, yeah.
And then again, for me, um, I did tour two kitchens, um, McKelley and Roosevelt. And so I do want to give a shout out to all the CNS staff. Um, for, you know, doing the day-to-day basis and serving all of our kids. Um, definitely, you know, a lot of work that goes in. I was actually able to observe like how they walk into the line. So that was really nice. Um, the superintendent advisory committee as, as well, uh, you were, you, you didn't, you missed it.
Yeah.
Um, which was great. I, I appreciate, uh, Dr. Baker, uh, putting this together. And then of course, um, Wendy spoke about HR and her awesome team. And so, uh, very, I guess innovatively thinking of how we are moving forward as a district to what, what I said, a different platform on hiring staff. And so that was really great. Um, it's, it was again, great to get all this information um, out to the community. So, um, I think we still need some parent representatives to join our meetings because I forget how many attended, but.
Eighteen.
Okay. Um, and then what else? Um, and then I attended the webinar on Cal Kids. We might've gone email about it. Um, basically is free money for college for students and it's through the treasurer's office. Um, and then again, I could send the information to Dr. Baker and then he can share with everyone. So that was it for me. Thank you.
So, uh, superintendent's advisory council that was already mentioned, but the great thing that I wanted to mention to the chamber was that we received the award on Friday afternoon uh, from in regard to the Stanford Community Partnership with, you know, the Department of Psychiatry at Stanford, along with the Gardner Center that was one of our partners and it was a great function. Uh, as soon as I get the plaque back, it'll go up there. Um, had a little accident with it. It fell off the tip on there. Some of it fell apart, but, but it's a nice plaque and it was a, it was a nice, uh, time to be among others and also to get, uh, Redwood City out there and the, uh, Stanford community well-known. And I was able to mention that there is, because of this partnership, there is a grant coming from the state that will be able to be, we'll be able to participate in. So didn't give any specifics because I can't, but, uh, afterwards some people came, what's that? What's that going to look like? What's that going to look like? And I said, well, we'll let you know. And Jorge will definitely do a, um, a release on, on what the money will be used for and so forth, as far as with the well-being center. And Dr. Josie will definitely help us out again. Together. So I'm really looking forward to seeing him. He wasn't able, it's too bad he wasn't able to be there. He was in San Diego. Because it really, I acknowledged him, but I was hoping that he would be there so we could, you know, I'll give him, you know, his kudos because without his help and the department's help, I don't think we would be where we are today. Especially with the training that they gave and that immense amount of time that they give to us just for the meetings that we have with them. And, um, it's on the map to be one of the, um, places for well-being that a school district on the peninsula does have. It does not exist right now on the peninsula. It exists across the bay, the one that we went to see. And so, uh, be exciting to see how that takes off. Yeah. So that and, um, last night's Garfield meeting, um, I want to thank Lupita Torres. I think she was on the call earlier. I think she's probably dropped off and she, along with, um, Susanna did an amazing job last night. I mean, parents, I thought, you know, what it was like before, when you're closing something down, I just thought, oh, I was not wanting to go to this meeting. It was not that type of meeting. I think the presentation that they put together, each of them individually, really gave a sense of what is happening, not only just in Redwood City, but in the state of California and outside of the state of California. Explained about the credentialing that needs to take place that is different for a middle school compared to a school that is a K eight school. And why people would want to go to a true middle school compared to be in a K eight. And it, it went well. It went really well. Um, and so I kudos out to both Leslie and Susanna last night. I mean, as, as Susanna said tonight, um, we, I understand you have a family here, but come join my family and we'll really make it home. So it, it was, it was great. It was great. And, and parents stayed and Jorge was there and Michelle was there and parents were going over to them right away. Okay, I'm ready. Let's move. You know, so, um, yeah, it turned out what I thought it was going to be. And I was very pleased, very pleased. That's it for me.
Great. Thank you. Um, any correspondence?
I mean, I did get, get some emails from a community member asking about bond oversight and stuff. And I think that they were reasonable questions and rather than have side conversations. Um, I know that we'll have that training at the CBAC that I had mentioned before. And, um, you know, and I think that getting a summary here is probably better that way. We can all hear the same information and, and kind of do that. And I had replied, uh, in that direction, uh, to the member as well.
Anything else? No? Okay. Um, and then other business suggestion items?
Yeah. So I was going to say, just to add on to what Mike said, I was actually thinking, um, that with the bond, you know, we did a lot of this for measure T kind of six years ago, right? Sort of setting up the system and reminding all of us and the community, sort of what the different roles and responsibilities are of the board, of the oversight committee, of our auditor, all of that. So I was thinking that, um, you know, this is just a formal place to ask for, that I think it would be good in addition to just kind of roles and responsibilities of the different groups and what we have in terms of, um, you know, how we're giving direction and being accountable uh, for the bond. Um, you know, we also need to start putting on the agenda, uh, moving towards, um, prioritizing which projects we're going to be doing first, because we know we have a long list. So, um, so I, so anyway, I just want to call that out here to get that on. Um, but I do think it'd be good to have a reminder, like you said, about all of that. So thank you.
I have one item. Um, this is my error. There is the, uh, CSBA delegation assembly ballot. I forgot to put that on. And so I just need a quorum for.
I think it's just a three out of, is it just a three out of three vote? Oh, anyway, no, we can't really.
Right, right. It's not on here. It, it, I believe.
But I'm asking it. We could talk offline.
Okay.
But, but I actually, I don't know if there's actual a contact. Oh, I'm sorry.
Anyway, we, go ahead.
So it's depending on, we can talk offline, depending on that, I would need, because it's due on the fifteenth. So I would need just a quorum like for Tuesday morning. A real quick, uh, one item. This is it. And like I say, I am, I apologize. I, I had it there and I didn't. I didn't open it.
Yeah, I have an all-day board meeting that day, so I'm not, I'm not available.
I, I'm on the East Coast for a business trip.
And Janet may be around, so I, Janet's not here. It would just be, it'd be real quick. It'd be like, if we, like, if we started at eight forty-five, we'd be done by, yeah, eight fifty.
I could, I could, I could do something like that.
Okay.
Tuesday.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm available.
Okay. So I'll just check with Janet. Yeah, that's all I need. I just, you know, it was there and when I opened it, I go, ah, March fifteenth.
Yeah, I, I think what I wanted to say is that, you know, I, I think it's three, right? Three people running for three positions. I, I, but, but I haven't actually seen the ballot.
Corrected.
Right, right. So it's not like four for three.
Right, right, right.
So it's three for three, but it is nice to actually send them a formal vote. So thank you for doing that.
We won't. All right. I will check with Janet then. Thank you.
So Tuesday morning around what time?
Eight forty-five.
We'll be out by eight fifty.
Yeah.
We could.
Okay.
Perfect. That's it for me.
Just as a process note, we've talked a couple of different times about having guest estimates as to amount of time per agenda item and I continue to not see those. Just as a process note, we've talked a couple of different times about having guest estimates as to amount of time per agenda item. And I continue to not see those on the.
We will remember.
Okay, so this is just a, a nudge uh, on that.
Yeah, because it's on the paper one here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Paper, but.
Start here.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, it's not on this. Yeah.
Big paper.
We, 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 you each get one. You each get one. It's, it's on your, it's, it's on your, yeah.
Well, bravo. Thank you. I didn't notice. Okay.
Yeah, that's how I was doing.
That's how she was calculating, just calculating. You were actually pretty close too, so that's not too bad.
Alright.
Fantastic. Sorry about that.
Okay, um, board meeting calendar?
Uh, the own item for uh, March twenty-second. The bond team would like to come in and do an update. So if we could start with like at five forty-five, we would do a meeting starting at five forty-five and be an update study session that would probably go until uh, I think it'd have to six forty-five. Then you have like a fifteen-minute break.
That's fine.
Okay, alright. Instead of having a di- another different meeting. Perfect.
Okay, with that, it is nine thirty-one. Who would like to make a motion?
I will move to adjourn.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.